From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Yes.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, good morning, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 2, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. In lieu of a flag salute this morning, we're honored to have the Kern County Sheriff's Honor Guard who will present the colors, and then Sergeant Augustine Moreno will sing the National Anthem. And after we retire the colors, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation. If you would all please stand. Thank you all, please be seated. That was marvelous, thank you so much to the color guard and also to Sergeant Moreno. Beautiful, thank you so much. Okay, we will start today's agenda, if you'd like to follow along, agendas are available at the two tables near the exits. And first, we're going to consider the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I will read the consent agenda items. Starting on page two, items five and six, as well as eight and nine are on consent. And on page three, items 12, 13, and 14, as well as 16 and 17 are on consent. On page four, items 19 through 25 are all on consent. All items on page five, 26 through 31 are on consent. On page six, items 32 and 33 are on consent. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for any comments or a request of motion.
Motion on consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, and now we will return to page two on our agenda, starting with item number one, under Resolutions Proclamations. This is a resolution honoring Graciela Vasquez, Department of Human Services, upon her retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to the county of Kern. And Supervisor Perez will make this... You're going to get another shot at that, too. Supervisor Perez will make this presentation.
Thank you Chairman, motion on resolution.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you.
Good morning Chairman Scrivner and fellow supervisors. I really am privileged this morning to honor one of Kern County's finest public servants. This morning, of course, we adopt this resolution honoring Graciela Vasquez on her 31 years of service to Kern County. Thirty-one years, basically my entire life. Thank you. And a few more. Graciela has been with Kern Medical, the Department of Human Services, as well as the Aging and Adult Services Department, where she has always been a stellar team player and has shown remarkable dedication to the county and all of its inhabitants. Gracie also loves to travel, spend time with her family, and already has several trips to Las Vegas planned during her upcoming retirement. So on behalf of Kern County Board of Supervisors, I would like to thank Ms. Graciela Vasquez for her tireless work, effort, and love to the county of Kern and all of its residents. Chairman and members of the board, I am honored to introduce Chief Deputy Director of the Department of Human Services, Ms. Cindy Utes, to speak more about Graciela and give her this incredible honor before your peers and family and county of Kern. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you Supervisor Perez, and good morning Chairman Scrivner and members of the board. And as said, I'm Cindy Utes, Chief Deputy Director of Department of Human Services, and I am proud also to stand here with Gracie to congratulate her on 31 years at the Department of Human Services and other county departments as well, so what a great honor for her. So I'm pleased today to be able to recognize her. Gracie spent several of her years working at DHS, and she had a caseload of AFDC back in the day, food stamps back in the day, and Medi-Cal. She was considered a subject matter expert for Medi-Cal. She then transferred to the foster care unit where I think she retired, and her foster care workers said she's a very delightful person to be around, she's always upbeat, has a great sense of humor, and that they're really going to miss her in foster care, and hope she enjoys her retirement. And I say viva Las Vegas, and hopefully, hopefully bring us back some tips on how to get rich after retirement. She also has raised six boys and now has 16 grandchildren, so that's great, congratulations to you. So at this time, it gives me great pleasure to recognize and thank you for all your service, and ask you to come up and say a few words if you'd like.
Well, I want to thank everybody, all my coworkers and friends for being here, and my family for supporting me. I couldn't have done it without my family supporting me. My husband unfortunately is at work, because somebody still has to work. But it was a pleasure serving in Kern County, and I'm going to be busy after retirement, but thank you.
Gracie, thank you so much, best wishes. Okay, that takes us to item number two on our agenda. This is a proclamation to proclaim May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Maggard will make this presentation.
Motion to approve.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Good morning colleagues. Good morning colleagues, it is my pleasure this morning to stand before you and talk for just a moment and hear a presentation regarding Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County, and joined by Bill Walker, our Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery here in Kern County. Thank you Bill for joining us, thank you for your leadership about this effort. Mental health issues, for some reason, continue to have a stigma about them. And as we watch the poor person walking down the street that we've all seen just this week, I'm sure, who is lost somehow in a dark cloud there, all alone in the midst of a bunch of people, with apparently no one to help him, that's one side of mental illness. There's another side of mental illness that is someone loved by a family in a home and a family desperately struggling to sustain their relationship with the person, to try to help them through the next siege of whatever it is they're dealing with. There's a lot of silent suffering, not only by the afflicted, but by those who are trying to be supportive of them. None of these are the fault of anyone, it's just the fact that some people have an illness that affects them, and we want to take that stigma away and to cause our community to see what opportunities there are to be helpful in that circumstance. So I'm joined, as I said this morning, by Bill Walker, our Director of Behavioral Health and Recovery here in Kern County, and we'd like to give you this proclamation, and then here you tell us a little bit, Bill, about what's going to happen this month. But this is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the county of Kern and the state of California. We have officially proclaimed May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Kern County in an into our record official minutes with the signature of our Chairman, the Honorable Zach Scrivner, on this the second day of May 2017. Thank you for your leadership in this, please tell us what's going to happen this month and what we can do as a community to help.
Thank you Supervisor Maggard, Chairman, members of the board. This is actually my fourth presentation of Maya's Mental Health Month, so time flies, but it is the first as Behavioral Health and Recovery Services have joined in our two departments together. And I try to think of what would be the right theme, and I think the theme this year really is to be thankful and appreciative. I'm very thankful and appreciative of the board, I'm thankful and appreciative of the audience that will be standing up in a moment, and I'm thankful and appreciative of the opportunities we've had to be able to move forward to provide services for those suffering from mental illness and substance use disorders. You have a packet, and in the packet there's a calendar, and I put calendars in the back as well, and I just want to highlight a few of the things that are going on this month that are pretty exciting. We're actually showing films at the Maya Theater on the 3rd and the 10th, and also a documentary on the 25th of the Breaking the Silence at the Beale Memorial Library. You'll also see that we have the CFC Open House on the 4th, which is right next to our major administrative building. So now our greatest gathering of individuals served is right next to our administrators, so we share the same break room and areas together. You'll see in red that our art show is moving around the county to some of your district areas, and like last year, I'm sure we'll be making cards and calendars out of some of this really great artwork that gets done. And on the 24th, you see our Academy Awards, which is really our premier event of the year, where we actually have our own Academy Awards, and actually award awards for people for what they've gone through in their life and how they've persevered. And at the end of the month, we're providing free mental health first aid training, which not only do we provide at this moment, but we would provide to any department. But I want to come back and say I'm very appreciative and thankful for the consumers, clients that we serve, for the contractors and service delivery of Clinica Sara Vista, College Community Services, Child Guidance Clinic. I'd like for them to all for a moment, go ahead and stand up to show all those that are here to support the mental health. And you'll notice that people are wearing a green ribbon, I'm glad to see Mr. Alslop wearing the green ribbon, which is the Maya's Mental Health Anti-Stigma Campaign. And I want to end on just a note, and if you'll just remain standing, of two things that happened last week. Many things are happening in the mental health department, but two things happened last week. On the same day, we had a team, including a lieutenant from the Sheriff's Department, down in Carlsbad, presenting to a technology conference on virtual mobile evaluation services. We are the only county doing that, and if it wasn't for our partnership with law enforcement, we wouldn't be doing that. At the same time with another lieutenant, apparently Donnie has several lieutenants, that he's loaning us. We were up in Sacramento making a presentation to the MHSOAC to draw down over $3 million of funding to set up what we'll be bringing forward to you to get your approval to launch the Smart 911, the special registry that would allow not just people with mental illness, but anybody to put their information, so when law enforcement or fire departments are responding under 911 calls, they'll have information that you've supplied to them that may be helpful in that emergency. Again, no one in the United States is doing this, and we wouldn't be able to do it without our partnership with law enforcement. So I just wanted to end on those two things, because they come out of a mindset of lean six sigma, where we're actually trying to be the most effective, efficient service delivery that we can with people's best interest at mind. So again, I am thankful and appreciative to the Board of Supervisors, to our agencies and peers, to the departments that work with us, and to the contractors that help us serve this great county. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Walker, fantastic work by you and all of your associates, and to the Sheriff's Department as well. That brings us to item number three on our agenda. This is a proclamation to proclaim May 8 through the 12th, 2017, as Peace Officer Memorial Week in Kern County, and to request permission to fly flags at half-staff during Peace Officer Memorial Week. And so the action is to proclaim, make presentation, authorize permission to fly the flags at all sheriff's office facilities at half-staff during the period of observance, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have just a couple of brief comments to make, and I'll turn it over to Sheriff Youngblood. You know, we have, as a board, we have a special relationship with all of our employees, and we negotiate with them, we try to support them. Sometimes it's contentious, sometimes we get along great, but in the end, we stand with all of our employees, because they are the lifeblood of the service that we provide. And some of them take a huge risk just going to work, and that risk is potentially losing your life. And our sheriff's deputies certainly are one of those. And as inadequate as it may be to recognize that risk and to recognize those that have really given the ultimate sacrifice, we recognize Peace Officer Memorial Week in Kern County. And I'll read the proclamation, and I'll turn it over to Sheriff Youngblood. The Board of Supervisors, the county of Kern, state of California, has officially proclaimed May 8 through the 12th, 2017, as Peace Officer Memorial Week in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by the Honorable Chairman Zach Scrivner, our Honorable Chairman, and it's dated today, May 2, 2017. And I know there's a couple of special events planned for that week, and I'll let the sheriff tell you about that, but Sheriff, thank you very much.
Good morning Chairman Scrivner, members of the board. On May 11 at 10 o'clock, we will have our Kern County Sheriff's Office Memorial Ceremony on Norris Road. Everyone's invited to that. If you haven't been to it, it really is pretty spectacular, and it really drives home the point of how dangerous this occupation can be. As you know, recruiting and retaining has been very difficult for us in this county for a lot of different reasons, yet when we visited the new academy last week, and we still have, I think, 47 or 48 young men and women in that academy, it reminds me that there are people that still, young people that still step up and raise their right hand, take that oath to do this job. And there's never been a more difficult time, you've heard me say it before, there's never been a more difficult time in our history of our country to enter law enforcement than today. As you can see behind me, we have a lot of officers here today. When you see officers, thank them for what they do, because somebody has to do it, and I couldn't be more proud to be the leader of the best organization in the country, and that's the Kern County Sheriff's Office. So thank you all very much.
Thank you Sheriff, and to all the men and women in your department, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item four, and we also have item seven, and Supervisor Gleason is going to make both presentations, and so we're going to hear these items concurrently. First, item four is a proclamation to proclaim May 6, 2017, as Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Kern County. That will require a motion. Item number seven, our certificates of recognition to Kern Pizza Hut Restaurants and United Way of Kern County for extraordinary recovery contributions during the Erskine Fire. Supervisor Gleason, please.
Motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, and so first we will hear the proclamation, Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Kern County.
Pleasure to be here, thank you Chairman. First one is proclamation proclaiming May 6, 2017, as Wildfire Community Preparedness Day in Kern County. This day is designed to educate residents about the need to create defensible space around their homes and properties in preparation for the impending wildfire season, to be safe within the sources, to be safe with sources of ignition, and what to do in the event of wildfire. This has been a joint effort between private citizens, businesses, federal, and Kern County agencies. The collaboration between private citizens, federal, and Kern County agencies in raising fire safety awareness in the communities has proven to be effective, we saw that last year vividly during the Erskine Fire. We hope that by promoting wildfire community preparedness in Kern County, we can help enhance the lives of Kern County residents and make their homes and neighborhoods safe. And I'll pass it off to the chief for some further comments, chief.
Thank you Supervisor Gleason. Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, good morning. I was going to bring some more firefighters here this morning, but they're on a wildland fire in the Kern River Valley right now. It broke yesterday afternoon, we were able to quickly contain it. As I've often said, we throw everything but the kitchen sink at these fires to catch them when they're small. Firefighters were on the front lines through the afternoon into the evening, and they're on that fire today. The temperatures are predicted to be in the high 90s the rest of the week, and fire season's here. It actually never ends in California, it never ends in Kern County. We spend the entire year either fighting wildland fires or trying to prevent them and keep our residents safe. Two weeks ago, we were in the Kern River Valley educating our citizens on wildfire preparedness. Last weekend, we were in Tehachapi, and next weekend, or this upcoming weekend, we'll be in Pine Mountain Club. It's that partnership with our citizens to keep them safe from wildland fire, keep their homes safe. The Erskine Fire demonstrated the power of a wildland fire. Nearly 300 homes destroyed, two people lost their lives, several firefighters from your Kern County Fire Department were injured. Truly devastating. This Saturday is Wildfire Preparedness Day, it's across the nation. It's not only a problem here in Kern County, it's a problem across the nation where we have these wildland urban interface areas. We'll be out there partnering with our communities, and we encourage our citizens to get engaged to make sure their homes safe. Like I said, these are your Kern County firefighters, they will be on the front line, and we also have a dispatcher here. Our dispatchers are that first line when a 911 call comes in, and then they're on the phone with people as they call up and say, hey, save me, the fire's coming towards my house. Our dispatchers order all the resources that respond to a wildland fire, and I know members of this board have been on the wildland fires, and they've seen all the different resources, whether it be aircraft, helicopters, hand crews, bulldozers, fire engines, they come from all over the state. So our dispatcher's here, too. It's truly a collaborative effort in the Kern County Fire Department, and hopefully we're not in front of your board this summer proclaiming disasters, but I can tell you, the Kern County Fire Department is ready to battle these wildland fires, but our number one goal is to prevent them. Thank you.
Thanks, we got a twofer. We got a twofer on this one, actually we got a threefer, we did the first one, now we have a couple of really pleasant awards to give out to some folks who, you know, Erskine Fire was, I've said it often, it's the worst of times, it was the best of times. One of the things that earmarked the best of times was the way our community came together. People who saw the need and responded, people just gave all they had, and then when they were done, someone rushed in, the reserves rushed in and gave some more. That's a story we have to tell, to share with you today, is the support that our community and our businesses, specifically Pizza Hut, is just one of many, but their contributions were significant. How we responded and came together as a community is truly a remarkable story. So first thing we're talking about here is the United Way of Kern County recognition, the United Way of Kern County in recognition of the generous donations assisting Erskine Fire long-term recovery efforts, and for exemplary, public service and civic contributions to the community in Kern County. The Kern Pizza Hut Restaurants made a generous unsolicited donation to the United Way of Kern County with the express purpose of assisting Erskine Fire survivor long-term recovery efforts. This donation was used to support the MHU project by funding inspection, repair, and certification of septic systems and title transfer fees. It turns out that the cost to repair and certify septic systems, which are required to render MHUs habitable, was not eligible for reimbursement under the state agreement. This cost posed a significant financial burden for displaced residents who were approved by the county to receive an MHU, so Pizza Hut jumped in. The United Way of Kern County acted as a fiscal agent for these funds, working in close cooperation with county staff. The United Way waived their customary administration fees and absorbed organizational costs associated with this project. Due to the generous support of the United Way, the entirety of the Pizza Hut Restaurants' donation, the entirety of their entire donation, was available to assist residents displaced by the Erskine Fire recovery long-term residential stability. Therefore, it is recommended that your board recognize the generous actions of the Kern Therefore, it's recommended that your board recognize the generous actions of the Kern Pizza Hut Restaurants and of the United Way of Kern County assisting survivors to recover from the devastating impact to the Erskine Fire. And with me, I have Della, who's going, Della Hudson, who's going to talk a little bit about the United Way and accept the award on behalf of Pizza Hut. Thank you, Della. Appreciate it. Your mic, go for it, use yours.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Unfortunately, our friends from Pizza Hut weren't able to be with us this morning, they had some business things come up. But their regional manager, Effren Ochoa, did ask me to express to you how delighted they were to be able to assist in this effort, and they wanted to thank everyone in this community for supporting the effort. You know, when Pizza Hut contacted United Way last summer and said, "We'd like to do a little fundraiser for you," and then have you direct the proceeds to some relief efforts, we said, "Sure," you know, we showed up to get the check, not realizing it was going to be for more than $25,500 from a few, couple of days of people eating a lot of pizza, and other folks making some donations. So with that amount of money, clearly, we felt like we needed some direction, and so we reached out to the Office of Emergency Services. And Georgia Anna Armstrong and I had many, many conversations about this, and she said, "Do you think that, you know, the donor would be okay with spending this on something as, you know, exciting as septic systems?" And I assured her that the direction that we received from Pizza Hut, as Supervisor Gleason has already alluded to, Pizza Hut wanted to ensure that their gift was going to long-term recovery and was going to have a long-term impact on folks who had lost their homes. And in talking with the OES folks, clearly, this was a major hurdle that we had to overcome, and so we said, "Absolutely, we would do that." And here we are today. We are delighted to be able to have played a small part in assisting these families in getting back home. These are folks who owned property, who owned homes there and lost them. And to be able to know that by funding this, these couple of things, these folks are going to be able to go home, and they're going to be able to be resettled permanently. So we are delighted with that, we thank you for your recognition. We thank the county employees and other members of the public who also gave to a separate fund that we had during the Erskine Fire, in which we were able to assist about two dozen other families, some of them, many of them county employees, but others who needed assistance with rental deposits, and some who literally had lost the tools of their trades and were unable to work after the fire. So we were able to use some of those funds, donor funds and United Way funds, to help a couple of, two or three people who had lost everything that they use in their business. We had a handyman who lost his tools, and we helped him get back to work within a couple of weeks after the fire and things like that. So the community pulled together on it. Thank you for this recognition, I will be sure to forward it to our friends at Pizza Hut as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Della. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Item 10, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. And I know I have a couple of people who have informed me that they would like to make a public presentation. First, I'm going to ask Ray Scott to come up. Ray is with the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee and a lot of other wonderful efforts, but he's going to give a report to us on the Great American Cleanup at the request of one of our board members, and then Sheriff Youngblood, I know, would like to make a presentation, then we'll open it up to the rest of the public. So, Mr. Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, Board of Supervisors. Once again, it's just a privilege and an honor to really talk about the success of our students, Kern County students and Kern County schools, in two ways. One, with the Greater Bakersfield Green Expo. For the eighth year now, we've been able to award over $6,000 in scholarships to art students creating recycled material artwork. Kern High School District uses this for their advanced arts classes. Because your Kern County Hallers underwrite the program, all the vendor fees go to creating the student scholarships. And in eight years, we've had over 500 students participate and over $60,000 in student scholarships given. Second is the Keep California Beautiful K-12 statewide recycling challenge that we hold in March. And Kern County has always done very well with their schools. Once again, this year, Kern County Schools placed 11 times out of the 54 awards throughout the state. Five schools here in Kern County, Arvin Union School District, Arvin High School, Kern County Food Services, Rio Bravo here Elementary, and Grimway Academy, all placed, receiving a total of $3,200 of the $18,000 that we give out throughout the state. You know, sir, I couldn't do this without the support and help of the Kern County Hallers. And because of the Kern County Hallers, your Public Works Division of Solid Waste with Nancy Ewer and Aurora Rush, if they didn't step in and help us, Keep California Beautiful would have closed its doors three years ago. For three years now, Keep California Beautiful main office is in Kern County. We took it from Sacramento to Kern County, so that way we could facilitate California from Kern County. Thank you.
Ray, thanks so much, that's tremendous.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener and members of the board. As you're aware, I wrote a board letter to place on the agenda for today's meeting to ask for a resolution declaring that Kern County is a non-sanctuary county. I'd like to explain to the board what my description of a non-sanctuary county is. A non-sanctuary county does not harbor criminals. We do not harbor people who are wanted. We are a law and order county, we're a law-abiding county, and the resolution that I wrote, or the board letter that I wrote, was pulled by our county council, your attorney and mine, for reasons that I won't, I'll let him explain why that was pulled, so this board did not get a chance to read that and to vote on that. I want to make it clear that I am willing to go this alone, I am willing to declare Kern County as the sheriff, that we are a non-sanctuary county, I'm willing to write that resolution and letter to the President of the United States, to the Governor of the State of California, and to both Attorney Generals declaring that. But first of all, I want to describe what we do in Kern County that makes us non-sanctuary. If you recall, there was a time when the sheriff honored 48-hour detainers from ICE agents. They would request that we detain someone for 48 hours after their date of release so that they could come, pick them up, and deport them. Federal courts ruled that that was a violation of the Fourth Amendment, and when that ruling came down, we, all sheriffs in the state of California, stopped honoring 48-hour detainers. At that time, I invited ICE agents into the jail, gave them office space, gave them access to the database, and that allows them to do their job. They can come in, they can look at who we have in custody, and then when they have someone that they want to be notified of upon release, they make a request for notification. We then notify the ICE agents when that particular inmate will be released. In April 2017, the Kern County Sheriff's Office notified Immigration and Customs Agents of 37 inmates pending release from custody. ICE detained 28 of these individuals upon release from the sheriff's custody. The other nine were released and not taken into custody. ICE agents interview those inmates in the jail, we advise the inmate they do not have to talk to the ICE agents, that's the law, and then ICE determines whether they're going to deport that person or whether they're not, not the sheriff. I want to make it perfectly clear, the sheriff is not an immigration officer, nor the deputies. We do not enforce immigration laws, that is a federal responsibility. We do not go on sweeps, we do not go on raids. During the current year, ICE has been notified of 141 inmates pending release and has detained 117. Under Senate Bill 54, ICE would no longer be allowed in the jail, no longer allowed to communicate with us or us with them regarding these inmates, therefore, there would be no interviews. ICE would then go into our communities to look for these particular people that they want to deport. All but two of the 37 inmates released in April of 2017 had a prior history, current felony charges, or prior deportation orders. The following is a sample of the charges and criminal history of 10 individuals released from my custody and subsequently detained by ICE in April of this year. Inmate number one, current arrest, felony drunk driving, causing great bodily injury, prior arrest, giving false information to a peace officer. Inmate two, current arrest, felony taking vehicle without owner's consent, prior arrest, second-degree burglary, receiving stolen property, grand theft, conspiracy to commit a crime, battery on person, resisting arrest, preventing dissuading witnesses from reporting a crime, attempting to escape from county facility, CYA, parole hold under the influence of a controlled substance. Inmate three, current arrest, felony assault with deadly weapon, threatened with intent to terrorize, prior arrest, give false information to peace officer under the influence of controlled substance, driving without a license, drunk driving, possession of stolen property, and taking a vehicle without the owner's consent. Inmate number four, current arrest, felony transportation, sale of controlled substance, possession of controlled substance for sale, prior arrest, possession of controlled substance, driving without a license, and alternate vehicle registration. Inmate five, current arrest, warrant for resisting arrest, refusing to leave property, disorderly conduct, drunk, assault on a peace officer, petty theft, prior arrest, inflicting injury on spouse, disturbing peace by loud and unreasonable noise, and assault on a peace officer. Inmate six, current arrest, warrant for willful cruelty to a child, drunk driving, driving without a license, prior arrest, driving without a license, drunk driving, arrestee has been arrested in three separate counties for drunk driving. Inmate number seven, current arrest, felony domestic violence, assault with deadly weapon, false imprisonment, prior arrest, possession of a switchblade knife, assault and battery, petty theft, driving without a license, drunk driving, and illegal entry into the country twice. Inmate number eight, current arrest, driving without a license, failure to appear, prior arrest, possession of a controlled substance, driving without a license, drunk driving, assault with deadly weapon, that creates bodily injury. Resisting arrest, battery on a peace officer, and felony resisting an executive officer, battery on a person, and hit-and-run resulting in property damage. Inmate number nine, current arrest, conspire to commit a crime, receive known stolen property, evading peace officers, prior arrest, drunk driving five times, driving without a license, disorderly conduct, drunk, trespassing, resisting arrest, false information of peace officer, hit-and-run with property damage, and illegal entry into the country. Inmate number 10, current arrest, drunk driving, drunk driving six times prior, false identification to a peace officer, possession of destructive device, possession of a loaded firearm, petty theft, possession of a controlled substance, parole hold, and illegal entry. This is a sample of 10 inmates that in April were released twice. If there are people that don't believe that these type of people should be deported, then we just have to disagree. I believe that allowing ICE agents into the jail to do their function is important and necessary to provide the safety to the members of our community. Make no mistake about it, a lot of these victims are in this country illegally. They're not afraid to report to law enforcement, you hear that all the time, that they're afraid of local law enforcement. We drive into that communities and those communities every day. They don't run from us, they're not afraid to report crimes, because they know that we are not ICE agents and we do not deport people. When we arrest someone, we don't even inquire what their status is. Under Senate Bill 54, this will allow some communication with federal authorities. Sheriffs would still be precluded from conveying information about persons convicted of crimes like domestic violence or drunk driving unless they had current or prior convictions for a limited list of serious or violent felonies. A list that is so limited, in fact, it fails to include serious violent crimes, including human trafficking, felony domestic violence, felony DUI, and my all-time favorite, solicitation of murder. If you don't believe that we should cooperate with our federal partners in the area of deportation with these type of inmates, again, we will just have to disagree. I am willing to go this alone, I think this board, I wanted to give you the opportunity to know what that resolution, what I was asking for that did not get to this board, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sheriff. Are there any questions for the sheriff, for members of the board?
I have a question.
Okay, Supervisor Press?
Sheriff, good morning. The lists that you provided, were these were from your April lists that you referenced as one of the 37, or individuals under the 37, correct?
Yes.
Were those arrests, I noticed you listed an arrest list. Were those folks that were, or rather, is that a list of actual convictions at the end, or is that specifically a arrest list?
These are people that have, I believe, been convicted and being released after their time served. That's when the ICE agents, that's what the request for notification is about. ICE makes a request for notification to the sheriff requesting inmate number three on release date, so that they can be at the door of the jail to hand off that person to them. Remember, if ICE isn't allowed to do this, they're still going to go looking for these same 10 inmates that I just talked about, but they're going to go into our communities, and they're going to go into the immigrant communities, and they're not going to apologize for doing their job, and that's their words, not mine. They're going to find this inmate number three, and if there's five or six other hard-working immigrants that are in the house with them, they're going to take them as well. So Senate Bill 54 is going to do exactly the opposite of what the Protam and the author says it will do. The immigrant community should be rallying against Senate Bill 54, because it's going to put those immigrants in harm's way.
Okay, so just sort of clarify, Sheriff, the lists that you provided were of actual convictions or of arrests, because the arresting charges are often different than what actually ends up being a conviction, as you know, Donnie, and I recall this from my days as a public defender. So I just want to clarify for the record, were those arrests or convictions, Sheriff?
Well, they're probably a combination of both. Sometimes, the charge is not pursued for a reason of no witness, the victim refuses to testify, I still can deport that particular person without a conviction, if they choose to. I don't want to speak for my federal counterparts, ICE agents, we do not tell them who or they should or should not deport. They have access to the database, that's their job, not the sheriff's job.
Okay. What will change, Sheriff, from your duties and responsibilities and capacity by this board's declaration of a non-sanctuary county?
The, we are in jeopardy with the federal government of losing federal grants. We currently have a contract with US Marshals where we house 100 to 120 inmates, that's about $4 million a year. Those are US Marshal beds, not ICE beds. We also have SCAP money, which is a half million dollars. Just a couple, three, four years ago, we received a grant for 27 brand-new deputy sheriffs in this county that was a federal grant. All those grants and all that money is in jeopardy if we allow the state of California to be declared a sanctuary state. My intent is to send a message to the federal government that not all of California is a sanctuary state. In Kern County, we are law-abiding, law and order, we believe in laws, we believe in following the laws, and these aren't new laws. These are laws that have been on the books for a long time. So we're not creating new law, all we're doing is cooperating with our federal partners, and I think it's important that we let the federal government, including the President of the United States, and the Governor of the State of California, and both Attorney Generals, I think it's important that we let them know, and let the community that we represent, that as elected officials, where we stand on this particular issue. And I'm very adamant that we are not a sanctuary county, and I think that I need to say that.
Sheriff, what will, is it your contention that if this county does not declare itself a non-sanctuary county, that the administration is going to withhold the $4 million? Have you been told that? Do we have evidence of that? Why should we believe that?
I think you can read it every single day in the news media, that the federal government is going to hold the state of California accountable. If you look at what's occurring with the Governor and the Attorney General of the State of California, they are at war with the federal government. Sheriffs are placed right in the middle of that. Sheriffs are placed right in the middle of that and the crosshairs of that between the federal and state government. All we want to do is do our job, keep our public safe, and allow the federal government to do their job, which is immigration. I can't promise you what the federal government may or may not do. I have no idea. What I do know is that I'm taking a stand for where we are in this county. I think the county council will tell you that you may not have standing in this particular issue, and that this is somewhat symbolic, and again, I do not want to speak for Mr. Nations, but it isn't symbolic to me. This is who we are as a county and who we should be as a country, quite frankly.
So is it your contention, Sheriff, that if we do not declare ourselves non-sanctuary, that the president is going to punish you and your department?
That's something you'd have to ask the President of the United States. I read the news every day, and the implications are there, but I can't speak for the President of the United States.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Mr. Nations, good morning. The sheriff referenced a decision that you made in regards to placing this on the agenda, and also, so first of all, I'd like to ask you to explain to the board and to the public your line of reasoning, and then if you could also speak to SB 54, this is a bill that has passed the state senate. I understand it's going to committee and assembly, maybe it already has gone through committee, I'm not sure, but he has some serious concerns with it, I'm sure members of the public and members of this board do as well. And so I'd request that you also could provide us with some information about that bill as well, to the extent that you feel is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kern County is a general law county and is a subdivision of the state of California. It possesses only those powers as exercised through its Board of Supervisors that are enumerated in the state constitution and statutes and those powers which are implied by the enumerated powers. When adopting a resolution, a board is acting in its legislative capacity. A resolution is typically a declaration about the future purposes or proceedings of the board or a statement of policy. A resolution may only be adopted in a public meeting of the Board of Supervisors. No action may be taken unless your board has published an agenda which accurately describes the items to be acted upon. The agenda is the board's agenda, not a department's agenda. The Brown Act defines a meeting of the board as any congregation of a majority of the members of the board at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any issues under the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Thus, only those matters falling within your subject matter jurisdiction that require action by your board appear on the agenda. An absence of subject matter jurisdiction means an absence of authority over the subject being considered. Any resolution by a board must be within the subject matter jurisdiction of that board. Otherwise, it is a legally void act with no binding effect. As the sheriff pointed out, the enforcement of federal immigration law is solely within the sovereign power of the United States government by virtue of its authority to establish a uniform rule of naturalization and its inherent power to conduct foreign relations. Local laws that seek to enforce federal immigration are preempted by federal law and the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution. There are two federal statutes which prohibit state and local governments and their officials from prohibiting other governments or their officials from sharing with federal immigration officers information regarding the citizenship or immigration status of individuals within their jurisdictions. For example, if the state were to prohibit local law enforcement from sharing citizenship or immigration status information with federal authorities, the state would be in violation of those federal statutes. However, those statutes do not require local law enforcement official to share the information, it simply prohibits others from telling the official that he or she may not do so. California does not now have, nor is it considering, a law that would require withholding such information. Senate Bill 54 expressly allows for sharing such information. There is not now any federal law that mandates cooperation between local law enforcement officials and federal immigration authorities. Such a law would infringe on the powers of the sovereign states and would have serious implications for the Tenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. When acting in his law enforcement capacity, the sheriff functions as a state law enforcement officer and is directly supervised by the California Attorney General. A Board of Supervisors has no legal authority to obstruct the sheriff and his law enforcement function. The sheriff is also the sole and exclusive authority to keep the county jail. The decision to cooperate with federal immigration authorities is solely that of the sheriff in his law enforcement capacity. He does not need a board resolution or any other action of the board to do so. Indeed, if your board were to adopt a resolution declaring Kern County to be a so-called sanctuary county or otherwise prohibiting the sheriff from cooperating with federal immigration authorities, such a resolution would have no binding effect on the sheriff because it would be obstructing the sheriff and his law enforcement function. I note here that the term sanctuary county or sanctuary city is not a legal term, and in and of itself, it has no legal meaning or significance. It appears to have become a popular shorthand reference to describe a jurisdiction that has opted not to cooperate with federal immigration authorities. For all of the foregoing reasons, I concluded that the resolution originally proposed by the sheriff, and really any resolution in which your board is asked to proclaim the county, a so-called sanctuary county or a non-sanctuary county, is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of your board because it cannot effectuate a future purpose or proceeding of your board, and it would be declarative of a policy that your board could neither enforce nor effectuate. It would be, in my opinion, a legally void act. On the other hand, if your board's concern or desire is to address the content of Senate Bill 54, that is something within the subject matter jurisdiction of your board since it involves pending state legislation that has a direct impact on local law enforcement and has been explained, and has, and as has been explained by the sheriff, may have a direct impact on public safety. Typically, taking a position on pending state legislation is done by way of a letter from your board to our state representative Zandor, the governor. And your observation, Mr. Chairman, that Senate Bill 54 is pending in the assembly is correct, it has not yet reached the governor, so it is still a piece of legislation that is in the process of development.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. Are there any questions for Mr. Nations from members of the board? Okay, seeing that, I'll open it up to a public comment. If you'd like to make a public presentation on this or any other subject matter, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board supervisors. My name is Dolores Huerta. I am the president of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, and we do a lot of work in our immigrant community, especially in the areas of South Kern. There are many cities that have actually declared themselves to be sanctuary cities, cities like San Francisco, cities like San Jose, and many other. Now, I don't think that anybody in our immigrant community wants to see dangerous people, of course, in our communities of any type, be they citizen, immigrant, or undocumented. But declaring, as Sheriff Youngblood has wanted to do, a law in order county really sends a very, very strong message and really strikes a lot of fear in the immigrant community. And contrary to what Sheriff Youngblood said, there is a lot of fear in immigrant community, and people will not come forward, and they will not, and I can tell you many, many instances where crimes have been committed, but they are afraid to call the sheriffs or the police because of fear of deportation. You know, one of the things that we have to remember is that the immigrants in our community really hold up the economy in agriculture, in the oil fields, in the hospitality industry, in the service industry, and we know that their contributions are huge, they are very, very immense. And you know, one thing that we have to remember, when people cross the border, it is a civil offense. When people cross the border without documents, they are not hurting anybody. It only becomes a felony once they have been deported, and that unfortunately was done by laws, but because that was not the case in many, I have done immigration work for the last 60 years, and I can tell you that before, people were not considered felons when they crossed the border and came back without papers. So I think we really have to think about what kind of messages we are sending to our community. We know that if we really want to be a law and order county, one of the things I think that we have to do is erase the embarrassment that we have here in the county of Kern and the city of Bakersfield of how many people have been killed by law enforcement. And this is something that has never really been addressed, I think, in our public eye. In fact, it's kind of been swept under the rug. So I think that there are a lot of things that we have to do to clean up the image of Kern County in terms of law enforcement, in terms of education, and I don't think that we have to fear that we're going to be losing any money from the federal government because there are many people working on that issue to make sure that we do not lose any money from the federal government. So I know we have a lot of work to do, but please do not take that, I want to thank you for not bringing up the resolution, and I do hope that this board will support SB 54 as it is now being processed in the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Renee Curtis Figueroa, and I'd have to say I'm very proud of my sheriff. And it just, I just don't understand why you guys want to protect MS-13. I'd like to know how many MS-13 were connected to those cases that he just read. Where is our safety? I am a citizen, I deserve to be saved and protected. You know what, I have nothing against immigration if it's done legally. California is out of control, okay? We got a bunch of people living in la-la crazy land up there in Sacramento. This is a law and order country, and we need to protect it. I just don't know what else to say except please listen to your sheriff. He told you, they're not afraid of them. They come out, they report. They don't want this MS-13 here any more than, I'm sure you don't. Please help us rein in these out-of-control, left-wing crazies that don't care about our law and order. This is a federal law. President Trump has a right to demand that illegals are deported. Where is the law and order? That's all I have to say, and I'm very proud of you. You're one of the only sheriffs in California that will stand up to this crap.
Thank you. He'll be next, please.
My name is Curtis Jane Bingham, Sr., street eventers for our Lord and Savior God Almighty Jesus Christ. Out of respect and honor to the board, our honorable chairman, pray God keep blessing you with wisdom and knowledge to make the right decisions. I really think there was benefit of you speaker, Councilman Couch, how you care about all your servants that come through, but you really highlighted the law. And so I would also just like to say, the Lord say, "If he don't cut the time short, no flesh will be saved." In other words, this evil is running rampant, and it's going to keep running rampant, see? And this is why the Lord put warnings in there for us to have a greater understanding. If we don't take a good look at what the Lord has to say, we're not going to really solve very many problems. If the Lord took away the sun, the sun is 1.3 million times the size of the earth, took the sun away, we would all have a problem. Now, the Lord put the sun up there. Law enforcement is the sun for us. If we don't take care of them and take them away, we're going to have a big problem. Law enforcement comes in as Councilman Couch, the other groups they want to have respect for. We have some groups need more than others, and it's not that they trying to be greedy or anything, it's the point, the line of work that they do. Law enforcement is like, it'd be like a bakery, give out safety pies. And in order for the law enforcement to give out safety pies, safety pies mean they'd be able to respond there to help you in a time of need. But in order for them to make the pies to give to everybody else that's wanting something from the supervisor, you have to take care of them first, see? Because everybody in here and everybody in this city can't do anything without law enforcement, it's just a fact. You say to yourself, well, what we going to do about it? You really can't do nothing about it but give them exactly what they want. They have to be considered first and foremost, they have to be, because the criminals won't stop, and they ain't going to stop. They sit back and laugh. You take a bank robber, his number one thing is speed. Okay, law enforcement is the same thing. We want to be faster than them, so when they go through something, we can get there. If we don't have enough of them, we cannot get there. See, this is why I love our sheriff, and I consider him a sheriff a sheriff, because all he's saying is, "I'm trying to do something about this crime." That's what he's saying. The Lord say law enforcement always ministers. He's acting just like he's supposed to. The Lord say he give us two-edged swords, and he's just trying to use his. See, you know, go up to Fresno, go up to Oakland, look what them leaders up there done done. Some of them got caught in, they ain't going to be being caught in, but look what our leader doing, in here fighting for evil every time you seen him. He's fighting and fighting and fighting, fighting for evil. We going to have to recognize what he's trying to do because it's the criminals, it's the people. It ain't nobody's problem, it's the people. So sometime when we think about what we going to do, we can also rethink and say, you know what, I'm going to vouch for somebody. And if anybody in here vouchs for law enforcement, first of all, you have God Almighty, Jesus Christ on your side, because his word is the highest, then his children, which is us, then the law, to take care of us. So we going to have to see when the sheriff speak, we going to have to give him some really true, honest respect because they putting their lives on the line. We just can't say it, they actually doing it. Say, it's really, really getting tough out there now, crime is running everywhere, everybody got to be scared, the alarm companies are making all kind of money with security systems because this crime is running rampant, it's the people. So he say, "Next year, I'm going to need more money." Can't blame him, because the people are rising up doing evil. So if we diminish and let the criminals keep rising up, which they going to do, what would that look like? Won't stop until the public start crying. And when the public start crying, everything get out of whack. So the sheriff is just trying to keep everything in order, and so I pray we take a look at him, recognize exactly what he's trying to do, have great respect for law enforcement. I'll say this, you take all the groups that want money. What group have this title? "I hate you because you race criminals." "I would like to see you dead because you race criminals." We tired of seeing you. Who gets that title? Nobody but them, and that's a shame. See, if they do something tiny and have to go to jail, why do they have to be separated from the other criminals if everybody just a criminal? See, why they call millionaire makers? Every law enforcement person with a badge and a gun out there is considered a millionaire maker. In other words, they trying to get him in trouble on something so they can get a suit, and many of them is doing it. They also call food stamp people. People look, if we can get law enforcement, because that's the power they hold.
Mr. Bingham?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your comments, and we appreciate your support. We ask you to bring your comments to a close. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. How many more people would like to speak? Okay, we'd ask if everybody could please try to observe our two-minute time limit so we can get through the speakers and onto our business and the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Danita, and I've been a Kern County resident my entire life. First and foremost, I am absolutely here to support our sheriff, Donnie Youngblood. He should absolutely be commended for his bold stance. Only a few other counties have passed similar resolutions or declarations. It was my understanding before this meeting that the county council didn't think this matter should be heard. However, I do want the board to consider all arguments, including those of citizens like myself who are concerned about public safety, and let's not forget the federal dollars that may also be placed at jeopardy for this county as well if we are classified as a sanctuary city. I myself have a husband overseas who I have been trying to legally immigrate for almost three years, and after us standing in line and spending thousands upon thousands of dollars, what are you saying to people like me? This is a slap in my face, and it's an insult to anyone who follows the law. Illegal aliens do not have the same rights as citizens or legal immigrants. Under Section 212(a)(4) of the Immigration and Nationality Act, a person applying to immigrate must not, and I repeat, must not be a public charge. And if they are, they are inadmissible. This population is undeniably an economic burden on hard-working taxpayers. When do the law-abiding citizens come first? Certainly not after the unilateral passage of SB 54 by Mr. DeLeon, who admitted that his whole family was actually here illegally. By a show of hands on the board, I'm just curious, how many of you have friends or family that are here illegally? Do any of you?
I'm not going to ask the board members to raise their hands on that, ma'am.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair. Okay. So what do I want? Besides law and order for Kern County and for us to be designated, even if it is only, you know, just a statement of support for our sheriff, I do want us to be designated as a non-sanuary city. I want you, as our elected supervisors, to think about the needs and desires of the citizens of this community. If that cannot be done today, then I respectfully request that this matter be placed on the agenda for a full public discussion so that you can hear how your community truly feels and know that we support our sheriff here in Kern County.
Thank you. Who'll be next, please? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, and our honorable sheriff, Donnie Youngblood. I come from a military...
Ma'am, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We know you, but for the record.
My name is Mary Helen Barrow. I live at 201 Jefferson Street in East Bakersfield. I come from a law enforcement and military family. And I want to salute all of us descendants of immigrants in this room, including our sheriff and each of you. The only natives in this country, the only native peoples are the Native Americans and their descendants. We are all immigrants to this country. Somewhere in our history, someone immigrated to this great land. There's a lot of disrespect and misinformation. A lot of people here have spoken about people that are here, quote, "illegally." They are undocumented, to be sure. As a former owner of both English and Spanish-language radio media and print media, I'm here to remind you that our agriculture industry relies heavily on these poor, abused, undocumented workers. They advertise regularly to remind the workers when the crops are ready in different parts of the country. They do it to this day. Years ago, when I was in Los Angeles County, one of the supervisors there was outraged because undocumented... I'm talking 30, 40 years ago, who felt that undocumented people were causing too much of a burden economically for health services, education, and the county. So they did this big expensive study and found out that undocumented people actually were supporting the county because they paid more in taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, excise taxes. They are there supporting us, as they do here in Kern County today. And Donnie, I respectfully disagree. Maybe a few people are not afraid to talk to law enforcement, but the vast majority are afraid to talk to law enforcement. There are a few brave souls, no doubt about it. I'm one of them. I'm a neighborhood watch captain. I just held a meeting in my home. But the vast majority of the people are afraid to come forth. No doubt about it, we have to do something. There was a great immigration bill that was ready to be passed years ago, but it wasn't allowed. Okay? We've got legislation that could be implemented, but it is not allowed to come forward at the federal level. Now, Donnie, you are allowing the ICE officials to be in the county jail. And if you continue that practice, which you, I assume, are entitled to do, I think they should pay us rent. I mean, we're on a tight budget, folks. If they're going to be on our premises, supported by county taxpayers, that we have a federal building here in the county, they should be housed there, not in the jail on county premises, supported by county taxpayers. Okay? So I... And I really feel that you ought to keep this in mind. Ever since I can remember, years ago, I led three trade delegations to Mexico to meet with the president of Mexico. Okay?
Ms. Barrow, could you please bring your comments to a close?
I will.
So we can get to the next...
Just remember, there have always been two signs on that border. Okay? Keep out and help wanted.
Thank you. Who'll be next, please?
Gustavo Guirregui with Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment. I think a couple of comments. One is sanctuary series, although it is symbolic, there are facts that are more secure than those that are not. And there are facts. In terms of budget, undocumented workers, people here in Kern County contribute $22.8 million to the country. So they contribute, and there is a study here that I'm going to share with you of those facts. And I'm a community organizer. I'm day in and day out in the communities. And if you are not there, Mr. Sheriff, you will not see their faces of fear. I agree. I want to be secure in this country, and I love to be in this country. I'm from Mexico, and Mexico is not good at these times. I appreciate even more being here. But most of the people that don't have documents are good people and working people. The county budget, my understanding is that it's more than 50% on safety, Kern County, and that includes the sheriff. Considering that the county is suffering a lot right now because of the oil prices and not getting the taxes and all of that, you know, cuts to the budget. Agriculture is one of the biggest industry. So do we want to shoot our feet again? Do we want to put those crops on jeopardy, as is happening in other states? That's what we want. My understanding is that the sheriff right now have the full authority to implement the laws within his jurisdiction. I don't... I didn't hear anything that is preventing him to do that. So I don't think that's needed. So please consider that, you know, I gave you some facts, but also what he's trying to do is unhuman. We are dealing with human beings. It's not just numbers. If you want numbers, we have numbers. But we are dealing with human beings. And yes, I want to be secure in this community, but there are boundaries. Let the federal government implement their laws and let the sheriff implement the county laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Romero. I've lived here in Kern County for over 40 years now. I've been a community organizer for most of my life, and my motto has always been, "Never leave a family behind." I'm here because we don't need to repeat any kind of Arpaio-type of scenarios. We don't need for the county and the sheriff department to be involved in a lot of lawsuits that are going to cost millions and millions and millions of dollars. I respectfully... I respect the law enforcement here. Sheriff Youngblood, you've done a good job, but at the same time, I also question the other side of law enforcement. Many times you hear when someone gets shot, the first cry that comes from the law enforcement officers is, "I fear for my life." And I think, how can you fear for your life when you're almost bigger, twice as big as the other guy that you're looking at? You got a car, you have other deterrents that you're not using, you got rubber bullets, you got bean bags, you got nets, you got dogs, but yet somebody's running away or somebody's down on the ground and he gets shot, and then you come out with, "I fear for my life." Again, we're just here because we're a community. We're all one community here. That means law enforcement, that means the immigrant, that means the farm worker, that means the families, that means red, white, and blue, and whatever color you want to call yourselves, because we all have the same colored blood. And that's what makes us all the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next, please? Good morning.
Hey, good morning. My name is Douglas McAfee. I'm a longtime activist here in Kern County. For 45 years, I've lived in Kern County, in Bakersfield, and I'm proud of Bakersfield and Kern County. When I leave Kern County, I'm not... I talk to people, and they hear about Bakersfield, they go, "Oh, that's too bad, I'm sorry," because they know what's going on here. No. 10 years ago yesterday, May 1st, 2007, the sheriff colluded, you know, with the DEA to close down Nature's Medicinal, which is run by David Chavez. And six collectives received a permit to give cannabis to patients that needed it. And this is a different issue, but no, it is the same issue, because history is repeating itself. Well, the board of supervisors allowed the sheriff to issue six permits for collectives to operate. He did that. He issued those permits. But he colluded with the DEA and shut them down. You know, and the next day, David Chavez opened up. They stole everything: cannabis, computers, everything. And I was at the race following that, and I talked to some of the DEA agents, so they didn't know what was going on. What's going on here? What are we doing this for? And I want to ask the sheriff's deputies standing around and the SWAT team outside and the police staff that we seemingly have here in this town to ask themselves, why do they follow a sheriff who, she uses the words Adolf Hitler used, calling for law and order when all he's causing is dissent? All he's calling is calling, all he's asking for is hatred. That's what he's calling for, hatred. And so for me, it's wholeheart for me to be here, but my brothers and sisters are being taken away, and families are being broken up. And it's because of hate, hate. I ask that the sheriff step down. The sheriff should step down from his office, because he's not doing the Constitution any good, he's not doing the people of this country any good. Thank you.
Who'll be next, please?
Mark Salvaggio, Ward 7 resident, District 2 resident. First of all, I don't know if you're aware of it, but your upper floors of your parking structure were closed to the public. So many people who wanted to be here today had no way of parking. I am not a university professor. I am not an immigration rights activist. I'm just a common man who was saddened and sorry to see our sheriff, Donnie Youngblood, bring forth a proposal that was meaningless, divisive, and pointless. What were you thinking? I respect you as our sheriff. No one here today says you're not doing a good job, but why would you put this board of supervisors on the spot like you did? The implication being that they may not be for law and order. Now, everybody knows Kern County is a conservative law and order county. It always will be. Our reputation on that precedes us. I wish you had gone through the front door, Sheriff Youngblood, and that would have been to ask that the board of supervisors go on record as opposing SB 54, because a great part of your remarks earlier were in opposition to that piece of legislation that is now in the assembly. That would have been a front-door approach rather than a back-door approach. I want to quote Greg Weiguss, a local farmer and past president of the Kern County Farm Bureau, in a letter he wrote to the board. "I want to tell you that I hope you will already know on the non-sanuary county that Sheriff Youngblood is going to be asking for. We have too many folks that are the backbone of our industry that are only here illegally because our current system does not allow them to be here legally. There is a tremendous demand of the agricultural work in the county, and our legal immigration system does not allow them to be here legally. A dysfunctional system is the reason we are in the mess right now on illegal immigration." I agree with our county council. I'm proud that we are able to have this debate in the greatest country in the world, United States of America. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Would anyone else like to make a public presentation? How many more do we have, please? Okay. Good morning.
My name... Sorry. My name is Mona Sidhu, S-I-D-H-U. Good morning, chairman and members of the board. It seems to me that the sheriff is simply panicking over threats and tweets from the president about what will happen if it is perceived that Kern County is a sanctuary county. No such proclamation has been made. And as the sheriff himself, when asked by Supervisor Perez, was not able to give any specifics as to when funding was going to be cut, if it was going to be cut, he basically said, "Well, I watch the news, and you can see what they're saying on the news." Well, the news has also reported that, I believe it's the 9th district, has... The courts have ruled that municipalities and counties cannot be punished for being sanctuary cities and counties by having federal funds withheld, and that's the current ruling, till it gets overturned or upheld. Also, the current federal budget that passed did not have any provisions, even though the president had asked for it. So there is no clear and present danger of any funding being cut, so please stop panicking, Sheriff. We do not need to fear for cuts right now. I would also like to say that if we are a law and order county, then we should follow all the laws, not just the ones we agree with. And if SB 54 passes, then we should follow that law or go through the legal processes to challenge that law, not take it upon ourselves, the sheriff's department, to only choose which laws he agrees with and which laws he doesn't agree with. So I'd ask for everybody to just take a deep breath, stop and think about what's happening, and remind ourselves that when the sheriff was initially proposing this non-sanuary status, he was quoted in the paper as saying, "No one knows what sanctuary means. I just don't know... I just know I don't want to be one." That does not... That does not inspire the highest confidence in the reasoning behind his request, because if you don't know what something is, the response should be to investigate it, not to have a knee-jerk reaction to oppose it, especially when the word is sanctuary and not genocide. The word sanctuary should not, in and of itself, create that kind of fear and panic. So I'd ask everyone to please take a reasoned approach to this issue.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Patricia Leal, and I work with Leadership Council. I, as long as many other folks have stated, we work with underrepresented communities, many of them being undocumented. The fact that even the non-sanuary resolution was even thought about, being put in this agenda, is definitely sending a strong message of division and hate to the communities we work in, to the communities we have here in Kern County. So this is why I am here, in solidarity with our diverse community, including our undocumented communities. community, the backbone of the San Joaquin Valley, of the agricultural economy. I am here to say how I want our county to grow and flourish with ideologies that will continue to promote unity, tolerance, acceptance, respect. If we continue to target, if the sheriff's department continues to target a community that unfortunately, for decades, have been dealing and resisting with this type of situation, we're not going to get to this position of tolerance and acceptance, a community that I want to see not only here in Kern County, but throughout our country. This is why I am here, because as a young adult, I strongly believe that each one of you, our Board of Supervisors and people in power, will ensure that as we move forward, we continue to promote and create this environment of respect, tolerance, and acceptance. And I'll end it with a quote. "World peace, like community peace, does not require that each man love his neighbor. It requires only that they live together with mutual tolerance, submitting their disputes to a just and peaceful settlement." Thank you.
If you don't have translators, I will do it with my farm worker English.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Buenos dias, estimados miembros de la Mesa Directiva, y todos los presentes.
Good morning, Board members and everybody here present.
Yo quiero dirigirme al sheriff Youngblood.
I want to direct my comments to Sheriff Youngblood.
Con todo respeto para...
Excuse me, ma'am, we need to have her name, please. What, could we have, como se llama, please?
Gema Perez.
Thank you.
Gracias. Quisiera preguntarle si alguna vez él ha visto en su comunidad.
I want to ask him if he ever since, in his community...
Que hay grupos de personas, sin documentos y voluntarias?
If there are a group of people without documents but are volunteering for their community.
Trabajando por más de diez años en mejorar nuestros parques y nuestra comunidad.
Working for more than 10 years, improving our parks and our community.
Sabemos que el departamento de sheriff y el departamento de policía no lo pueden hacer solos.
We know that the Department of Sheriff and Police Department cannot do it alone.
Hacemos zumba gratis mañanas y tardes.
We do zumba exercise mornings and afternoons.
Hacemos limpiezas.
We do cleanings.
Vemos que hace falta en nuestros parques como luces, banquetas, juegos.
We see that we have needs in our parks, like playgrounds and lightings and sidewalks.
Hemos recibido golpes porque en los parques que trabajamos son los que la comunidad no va porque tiene miedo.
We are being assaulted in parks that we work, because those are unsafe parks, and we are working to improve those.
Hemos sido amenazados con armas, pero seguimos trabajando.
Some people are even treating us with weapons, but we continue working to improve our communities.
Hace poco tiempo logramos casi seis millones de dólares para mejorar una comunidad.
Recently, we secured over six million dollars to improve a neighborhood.
Y mientras estemos aquí, nos dejen estar aquí, vamos a seguir trabajando.
And as long as we are allowed to be here in this country, we will continue doing that.
Voluntariamente e indocumentadamente.
On voluntary basis and without documents.
Porque hay mucho trabajo todavía por hacer.
Because there is a lot of work to be done.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening to me.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lori Renee, and I'm fortunate that I have not had any bad experiences with any of our sheriff department or our police department. I'm sure that has something to do with my white privilege and the fact that my mother gave birth to me on this side of the border. I live with and have family and friends that are educators and administrators in the Education Department in Kern County, specifically in Lamont and Arvin, and I can tell you that they have heard many stories from the teenagers in those communities of fear of our local law enforcement, of battery and beatings and abuse. And because of the current administration, a lot of fear of broken families, diminished grades, students that are not showing up in class for fear of deportation, the list just goes on and on, because these students are really afraid their parents are going to be taken away, their families are going to be broken up, that they themselves, some of them being close to 18, are going to be removed from their homes, because we may not be a sanctuary county or a sanctuary city. I think it was in Lamont that they recently had a vote whether or not they were going to be a sanctuary city, and, that was Arvin, thank you, and they chose not to, and so those teenagers are worried, you know, they're afraid that if they come in contact with law enforcement, or that maybe their parents who are selling flowers on the side of the road so that they can feed their families, they're going to be picked up and taken away. Or maybe they're selling fruit on the corners. It's just, it's really, really scary for them, and Sheriff Youngblood gave us a small sampling of some criminals that obviously none of us want walking the streets, but they could easily have been, you know, white people too, you know, they could easily have been people who were born on this side of the border, and when they got out, no one was waiting to take them and ship them off somewhere, they're just going to rejoin us in society, and we have to put up with them and hopefully not be harmed by them. So I don't think that what he's proposing, to protect us for those small amount of people, is in the benefit of everyone when it comes to protecting all of these other families that we have to take into consideration, and that's all, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tony Amarante, A-M-A-R-A-N-T-E. I live at 1307 Princeton Avenue, and you guys know this is a national news story, right? I mean, I heard it like the Saturday before last Saturday morning on NPR, I heard the quotes from the sheriff. It's been in our local paper, it's been in the LA Times, this is a story that's not going to go away, and I heard Mr. Nation say that you guys had the ability to send a letter to the governor, send a letter to our Assembly people, you know, stating your position on SB 54, but if you declare a proclamation, and it's something you don't really have a legal authority to do, it's not going to make Kern County look good, and I would hope that you would consider sometimes it's better to keep your mouth shut than open your mouth and make people think you don't know what you're talking about. Thanks.
My name is Josh Stener, community organizer. So, I think I want to direct my attention to what, well, to everybody, but I wanted to highlight something that Mark mentioned, Mark, Mr. Nations, which was that we are here, the board is here, not necessarily to do Donnie Youngblood's, was it, not to pursue his agenda, but to pursue what the board wants, right? So I think, Mr. Youngblood, you've made your message loud and clear to the members of our community, and I'm sure that, because this was published in the LA Times, that the administration has heard that you are wanting to go about this. I think we all know that Kern County is a law and order county. We can see it in the way that you fund them over a lot of other things, we can see it in the expansion of the new jails, and in all the jails that we have, we can see how much of a priority public safety is here. But, but I think I want to also direct attention to a couple of things that, that we said that, you know, are completely, that are a little problematic, I think it was a little problematic to list as many crimes as you could possibly come up with, to really scare people, because I, and tell folks that the people who are in community are, our communities are, you know, dangerous criminals. There are dangerous criminals in everybody's community, but first-generation immigrants actually have lower crime rates than the majority of even citizens, like, actualized citizens and folks, so I think that's something that we should really highlight. Additionally, we in Kern County, we know that we are the backbone of the state, right? We are that breadbasket. We consistently have people extracting oil, extracting all of our produce and all that stuff, and we're the better for it, but we're really the lifeline to a lot of the country. And a lot of that really falls on the backs of our undocumented workers and our immigrant workers, and Sheriff Youngblood is scared of losing four million, which there's a federal injunction about that, and that's probably not going to happen, but I want to talk about a couple of numbers that we do risk losing if people are too scared to go to work. We've heard stories across the country of people that are too scared to go to work because they're scared of being deported and separated from their families. One of them is, or even if people are deported, well, one of them is $32 million, Sheriff referenced $4 million grant, $32 million is the amount of money that we receive from undocumented immigrants in the result of property taxes. And then $31 and $31.5 million is the additional money that we receive yearly in sales tax and other types of tax. So that's far more than the $4 million that we get in a federal grant, and so what's going to happen to that money if we continue to antagonize and really strike fear in the communities that we should really be protecting? So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Any other speakers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond.
Please do, thank you, Sheriff.
If you listen to the rhetoric from what you just heard from a large percentage of this, of these speakers, they focused on the hard-working immigrant in our county. I'd never talked about the hard-working immigrant. I talked about the violent criminal who's in jail in custody for victimizing citizens of this country and undocumented citizens of this, or people in this country, not about the hard-working immigrant. But activists draw this in. The fear, if it exists in our community, comes from these people, not from local law enforcement. They spread this fear and this rhetoric that tells the people they should be afraid when they should not, and it's really disgusting to hear what, some of the things that they had to say. They talk about the fear in the community. We signed over 100 U-visas last year. A U-visa is an undocumented or illegal immigrant in this country who is a victim of a crime, who comes forward and cooperates with law enforcement. That's just the 100 that asked for us to sign that U-visa. Lastly, I want to point out that over 400 cities and counties across this country voted themselves sanctuary cities or counties. These activists, not one of them stood up and said they shouldn't do that. How did these 400 communities, how did these 400 communities do that? And we, I asked for us to be a non-sanctuary county, which means criminals that are preying on our community, that are in the country illegal, should be deported. It's as simple as that, the rest of this is simply rhetoric.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Now, I'm going to return to the board, I, do we have, okay, you haven't spoken yet, please come forward. Mr. Turnipseed, are you wanting to speak as well? Okay, all right, two more, and then I'm returning to the board. There wasn't anybody else, right? Okay, well, okay, now we got another one standing up? Okay, so three, three more speakers, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julie Solis, and I'd like to tell you, Donnie, what's really disgusting. Not these people here defending our immigrants that are the backbone of this county, but what's disgusting is your sheriff who harasses our people on a daily basis. My father owns a home at 452 East Warren Avenue in Oildale, and we are afraid to go to that home because of the sheriff. I cannot believe that we're here wasting our time on this resolution that you want when people are sick and dying in our county from valley fever, wasting our time on this front page all over the place, that is insulting to people. Jean, Tabra, Xavier, Jennifer, Christie, Connie, Mark, Lisa, Brandy, Tracy, Ryan, Chris, were all residents of Kern County the past seven days that had been diagnosed with valley fever. Angelica traveled here from out of state for a wedding and left with a really good gift of valley fever. Jaclyn's husband is in the ER as we speak again, and my husband was just re-released from the hospital. Chow Mein, a cute little laboratory retriever, has just lost his life over the weekend from valley fever. Melissa is in the ICU at Kern Medical Center right now, battling for her life, and here we are, wasting our time on this racist bigotry. What a shameful day.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, dear Senate, I mean, representatives and Sheriff Lot. My name is Micah Tapia, I'm here, a local resident from Bakersfield since six years ago. I have been living in Santa Barbara County for many years. I'm part of the third generation of immigrants, and my, and proudly being a Mexican-born, and also proudly to become a citizen of the United States years ago. This is really, fortunately for me, weird, when I think I'm going to live in the right end, and proudly living in the USA with the liberty for all, and I can see how differences are from one county to another county, and for me to see this situation is really a shame, because you are part of our heroes, it's supposed to be part of our heroes. We have, I have been working very close to the county of police officers down in Santa Barbara, to support them and prevent addictions and prevent gangs around the streets. Unfortunately, many of those people got to see it, and here, what I can see is against our community, and it's not because I say it, or any of us in the front lines to saying this. All this situation is become for our government, our new president. You can see it on the news. He says all the immigrants, all the people who came from Mexico are criminals. So that is not my word, that is not them words. So you are supporting them, you are supporting these words, and it's not because the people are afraid from us, it's because you repeat it. You are part of the community and you support his words. Instead of working for them and try to do a, in another way, I'm not a low person, I'm learning from you. And my background is chemistry, and also I'm working as an organizer, and also I'm working right now for DHI, and I can see many people live medical because they are afraid. They are afraid, it's not that they are not. So I was asking you if you want to become, for many years, the representative of sheriff here locally in Kern, how to do, how can you deal with this issue? You don't want a public dangers, and we don't do either. You can have another ways if you support your community, but we need SB 54 because our immigrants from many other countries are here to work and to provide to their families, and we don't have immigration reform probably since about 20 years ago. My family came here legally, and that's my path, but others are, unfortunately, they don't have this opportunity yet. At the time, they become residents of the... At the time, they become a residence or of the United States, if something good happened under immigration, they not going to take those years of work to the social security. Or probably, they are left ten years to work. And at the time they retire, they're going to have probably three hundred dollars on their pocket each month. Because after 2004, thanks to President Bush, every person that had become resident, they cannot report, they have to pay taxes before they become resident. But they, those years of work, they're not going to be on their, uh, names no more. So, where are those money? It's paying you. That taxes are in your job. They're paying you. This illegal person or undocumented are paying you. And they're not going to have that money for their end of their lives and working hard. Thank you.
Mr. Turnipseed.
We know fifteen people.
Ma'am, ma'am, listen, ma'am, we, listen.
In that thirteen, Santa Maria, California, last year.
Ma'am, this, it's not productive to have back and forth with the audience members. We appreciate, everybody, everybody got an opportunity to speak, and so did you. This is our last speaker, Mr. Turnipseed. Please proceed.
Yes, today, Michael Turnipseed speaking for myself because I couldn't get the forty-eight hour system to work over the weekend for me for current tax. But one question came up, sanctuary cities. If they're actually breaking the law, then somebody needs to arrest the mayor and convict him and put him in jail. If not, then all this stuff needs to go bye-bye. We, we all talk a lot, we all have a lot of diseases out here, but we're talking about the symptoms, not the diseases. And the disease is a bad immigration program. I, I gave you each copies of a Valley Voice from the Fresno Bee that happened to come out Saturday by Darius Asimi. I don't know if you know Mr. Asimi? He's a major home builder in Fresno, Groundville Homes. He owns Maricopa Orchards here in Kern County. He is a very, he's an immigrant, a very successful immigrant. And his letter basically had three points. Number one, in any program we have to do, we must protect our borders. That's like the baseline. We must allow illegal immigrants a chance to come out of the shadows. There has to be a program for the twelve million people that are here that we don't have these discussions all over the country. And third, our immigrant program needs to be updated to reflect the needs of our current economy and the country. And with that said, on a personal note, in seventeen thirty, two brothers came from what's now Switzerland to Columbia, South Carolina. Their name was Rupsumi. In the Revolutionary War, that name got translated to Turnipseed. So, we've been here a long time. And my wife's grandparents immigrated from Croatia, Dubrovnik, to California during World War I. And even my wife's side of the family, they came from Italy in the eighteen eighties and in nineteen seventeen ended up in Old River. They all three had one thing in common, three things in common. They didn't speak the language, they didn't have any money, and they were hungry. And I think that's why a lot of people immigrate to this country. But there is a system, and I assume since we've been here in nine generations that somebody took care of the paperwork, and I'm legal because I really don't have a piece of paper that I can show anybody. But no, this is a serious issue, not a laughing matter, but Kern County's not going to solve it. And it's just going to create controversy, and I had a lot of phone calls over the weekend with a lot of people, and a lot of people just don't want to get up and say that. So, we all wanted, what I said today, the three points, I think that speaks for a majority of people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude the public presentations portion of our meeting. I will return to the board and ask if there are any board members that have any questions or comments. Supervisor Couch is punched in. Supervisor Couch, please.
Thank you. Um, I just have some very brief comments. I'm not going to take very long. I want to take a reasoned approach to this. I heard that mentioned today. And Sheriff, I want to say that I certainly don't find your efforts pointless. I had an interesting meeting yesterday, and it dawns on me that one of the people that I met with was in the, not in the country legally, but by all accounts was a hard worker, good, good person, good citizen. And what was relayed to me in that meeting was the, the fear that we've heard about today, but it occurs to me that this individual that was here illegally had to come through the metal detector where there's sheriff's officer and, um, all the way into a county building, all the way up to a supervisor's office, but apparently was not in fear at that time. That fear occurs elsewhere. It's difficult not to be unnerved, Sheriff, by your presentation and the statistics and the list of charges that you enumerated. I've read your, the proposed resolution that you had submitted, and it is not about race, it's not about racism, it's not about hate, it's not about nationality. I believe to characterize it as such is incorrect. There may be other agendas at work, but it's, it's a simple two-page resolution, as you know, and it's, it's very, um, to the point, and it doesn't, you don't, you don't read any of those things into that. It's about opposing two specific pieces of legislation and stating unequivocally that we are not a sanctuary county, but that we are a law and order county. I would like to stand with you, and I want to support you in any way that I can. And I would like to have a further discussion with you about how I could be supportive of your efforts. I have no, I do not know if this will, how this will turn out, but I would like to make a motion. One of the speakers mentioned that we can't, she knew that we couldn't act on it today because it wasn't an agendized item. So, I would like to move that we bring this item back next week as an action item, specifically your proposed, uh, resolution, for the board to be able to take action on it. Again, if I didn't say it, I would like that to come back in our next meeting. Those are, those are my comments, that's my motion, and I appreciate you, Sheriff, for being willing to bring this item forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I was so touched last night by my father, uh, who is a minister in this community and has been so for four decades. He came over and he insisted on praying for me, uh, to which he did this morning as well. Uh, and he shared with me one of his all-time favorite scriptures. Because I asked him, you know, what do you think about all this? And in his normal sort of cryptic way, he said, let me share something from the Bible. And he shared with me one of his favorites, 2 Timothy 1:7, that says, "For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power of love and of sound mind." And I think that's critical to this debate as we move forward. Because everybody on this dais supports our sheriff, supports our deputies, and when we think about this issue, I think it's critical that we think about the role this board plays, our relationship with outside players, and the potential impacts of the future of this county. You know, my position on the Board of Supervisors demands that I seek and implement, together with my colleagues, policies that create the best opportunities for our community members to prosper. And this is a delicate balancing act between a multiplicity of competing interests. This position requires that I very regularly put aside my own feelings, my own opinions, and cultivate solutions to our county's needs in a post-partisan manner, along with my colleagues and very important members of the community. This week has been different than any other week in my time as supervisor, as I have received many calls, emails, and correspondence from terrified residents in this community. And what has been most striking about the last week is how many calls, emails, and correspondence I've received from business owners, farmers in this community, conservatives, homeowners, taxpayers, who are very concerned and worried about the impact, intended or otherwise, by these kind of actions by this board. I have listened to hours of conversations from political leaders, activists, organizations, civil rights organizations, and mostly concerned parents of Kern County and across this great state. The reality is that every single conversation that I've had has ended in the same way. In what fashion and in what way do these actions benefit the county of Kern? You know, my job is to administer the affairs of the county, and this proposal, intended or otherwise, amounts to a very partisan political statement that continues to drive a political wedge between Kern County and Sacramento. More than this, it is a wedge that sadly is splitting this beautiful community into two very hostile camps. This issue unfortunately conflates immigration with crime. No one in this room, no one on this dais, no one who has contacted me, supports crime. To wrap immigration with crime is dangerously provocative. In my own professional capacity, within my office and with my staff, I have received a threatening hate mail in the last two weeks. It's now being investigated by our own law enforcement, for which I am deeply and personally grateful. I am a sitting supervisor in this county, and within my own home, I have been forced to take added security precautions because of the racialized nature of this debate. To my knowledge, I am the only supervisor who has received such correspondence. I have a county to help manage. Within our county family, there are many players desperately seeking economic solutions for our county's budgetary needs that relies on a vast web of connections across the state and into Sacramento. This direction is one that is fiscally dangerous for the county of Kern, unnecessarily divisive as we have witnessed this morning, and scary for countless innocent residents of this community. They have been and will continue to be, I suspect in larger numbers, bullied, harassed, and terrorized as we proceed in this direction. On behalf of my constituents, this county, and my family, I wholeheartedly disagree with the direction of this conversation and debate, and I ask this board and this county to take seriously the advice we have received from our county council, who is a fair, objective, and brilliant legal mind, and who has asked us to please, given the nature of our jurisdiction, given the impacts it is likely to have to us with our relationship with people who fund this county, I ask my colleagues, as well as this county, to discontinue the ugliness of this debate. Help us seek solutions that are meaningful to this county, that help us build economic opportunities for the future of this great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Gleason.
Thanks, Chairman. What a mess. What a mess. I want to start off by saying thanks to Supervisor Couch for his words, and also, I thank you, Ms. Perez, for your words. I respect both of you immensely, and I know they seem to be on opposite sides of this argument, but I respect and admire both of you for what you're doing. I also respect the sheriff. Sheriff, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming up. I appreciate you, you're taking the stance that you're taking and having the courage to do that. I have a different angle on it, and I want to share my thoughts with you on how I'm approaching this problem. I, I see this problem as three distinct issues that kind of are converging together, and somehow we need to, to solve these three issues. The first issue is the politics of the situation. We have politics involved in this, and we need to, to understand those, and I'll go through those a little bit. The second issue is public safety. I think that is the paramount function of any county government, and how we best manage public safety, I want to talk about that for a quick minute. And then I want to talk about value versus cost, because I think there's value in action, and I think there are costs associated with action and inaction. First, the politics. Uh, I heard Mr. Nation say that, um, essentially, offering proclamations may, of this type, may be akin to giving direction to, or may be interpreted as giving direction to departments or other elected officials, or the sheriff's department in this case, where we make a proclamation and whether it's sanctuary or non-sanctuary, and it gives him a broader envelope within which to conduct his operations. He may use that to his advantage, he may not. He may completely disagree, disregard our, our words because he doesn't have to. For, for years, for ever since I've been in this job, I've heard the sheriff and other people tell me that the sheriff is an independently elected official, that I cannot direct what he does. He is in charge of his domain. My job is to give fund his, give him money. And anything intrusion into our ability to influence his operations is not within the jurisdictional boundaries of the Board of Supervisors because he is independently elected, and our forefathers and foremothers have decided to craft this organization in that way, and I think there's some wisdom to the way they did that. Because if this proclamation does influence his behavior, then I've got several other proclamations I'd like to, like to offer. I'm going to follow that with several proclamations. The first proclamation I will be, I will begin to discuss and develop and ask staff, staffed out, is something that akin to this, something that says that, um, I, I believe that the sheriff, sheriff's resources need to be allocated more in a way that protects the rural areas of our county. Because I believe the Kiavi Kern River Valley may not be getting what they need. We all know they're not getting what they need. We're doing, we're just doing the best we can, but I would offer a proclamation to say that, and I would hope to get some support from my supervisors because they have rural areas also. Then I'd offer a proclamation to say, hey, remember that Ridgecrest Jail decision we made? I'd like to go revisit that because that put Eastern Kern into some type of jeopardy, and it puts him to, at a risk level that I think is unsatisfactory, and I would offer more propositions to get the sheriff, an independently elected official, to behave more in tune with the way I wanted him to. I would be looking out for primarily, I'd look out for all of Kern County, don't get me wrong, but I'd focus on Kern River Valley and Ridgecrest and Delano. I would take care of my district. Once that happens, and I, I'm surrounded here by four other very smart supervisors. They know exactly what's going on, and they see any, any movement, any direction, believe me, they're going to be jumping out just like I would at trying to defect and defend and protect their constituents. So, what we'd be seeing, in effect, is a public safety program that was designed to be administered by a competent, well-respected, highly trusted sheriff, decay and slide into an area of where it would be a political pawn on a chessboard, and we'd be moving pieces back and forth because we want to take care of our constituents, or I'm up for reelection, you got to help me. And the sheriff, instead of being a person who is managing his department, he'd be responding to calls from the public, the dais, and it'd go on the newspapers, and it'd be on the radio, and he'd be doing, he'd be putting pressure, we'd be putting pressure on him that he's already got enough pressure. He doesn't need additional pressure from us telling him, you know, I, I tell him enough what he's doing wrong in District One. He doesn't need to, we don't need to, he doesn't need to hear that, hear me tell him that in public. He gets enough of it. I can't tell the sheriff today to move that sign that goes into the mouth of the Kern River Valley Canyon. I can't tell him. I can't tell him to reinstate the Ridgecrest Jail. Sheriff, we pay a hundred twenty million dollars, what's a couple hundred extra thousand to keep that Ridgecrest Jail? I can't tell him to do that because it's his job, it's his domain, that's the way it was set up. And when I think about it in totality, I think it's the only way to operate. I don't think I can tell, nor do I think it'd be appropriate for any of us to be telling the sheriff how to do his job. He is the best public safety officer in the state of California. I, I've said that, I've said that a dozen times, Donnie, and I get a lot of grief for that, by the way, but it's true. That's how I feel. I think you do the total Kern County public safety program justice, and I think you give it your best shot, and I trust your judgment. We had a town hall meeting a couple weeks in Kern River Valley, and the sheriff grabbed the microphone, and he ran up and started talking, and I'm sitting in the back, and at one point, he said something interesting, what I thought was revealing. He said, you know how to change Kern County? Pressure. He said, you want to change the things in Kern County, pressure the Board of Supervisors. Go talk to them about, give them an earful about what's going on. And I was about to grab the microphone and give him my thoughts, but I didn't, for two reasons I didn't. First reason is because I didn't want to create the optic in front of a town hall meeting that was already, you know, these people are deeply concerned about their safety and the safety of the Kern River Valley. But I didn't want to create an image, an optic of a conflict between a supervisor and a sheriff, that's number one. Number two is, I think he's right. I think the pressure belongs here, not there. So I would not, I am not of the mind to create scenarios or create proclamations that shifts the responsibility away from us and forwards it to him, because once we start down that slippery road, I'm going to do it constantly, and other people will do the same thing. So I worry that we maintain the moat around the public safety departments, all of them, of protection by allowing them to, you know, they got enough pressure on them, I'm not of the mindset to give them additional pressure. What I would support, what I would support today is a clear articulated position on how we feel as a community about SB 54. I would be very supportive of clearly proclaiming to somebody, not that we are sanctuary or non-sanctuary, but that we oppose SB 54. The reason for that, my final comments are value versus cost. The bottom line is, today, we are a law and order county, and we will always be a law and order county. That's who we are, that's what we do, and that's how we go forward. Until the state changes and mandates that we change, then I don't know what good, if that change occurs, what good any proclamation is going to do anyway, other than possibly put at risk other funds in other state departments, which would consider us less worthy of those receiving those funds. So I am strongly opposed to the state saying we're a sanctuary state. I do not think that's appropriate. I do not think that's fixing our problem. I think that's continuing the problem. I think if the law says, I think we are a nation of laws, and we need to obey them. If you want to change the law, then change the law. Don't add another one to circumvent the previous one. So I respect everybody's emotions. I truly do. I thank you more than anybody to help me understand, and I'm very thankful, and I want to see Kern County be a place of peace and prosperity. That's my greatest, my greatest thought, and so those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Gleason. Supervisor Maggert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've done this a long time. I have watched many, many public debates occur, and it always, I've come to expect it, but it still surprises me that whenever things like this, discussions like this take place, we go to the far extremes of the discussion, and we paint it in terms that are the most divisive. That saddens me, that that is apparently human behavior to do that, and that is what we're watching take place today. I need to make something crystal clear, because I think other people are defining what we are, and I refuse to be defined by what other people say that we are. We are not now, nor have we ever been a sanctuary county. I do not intend to make a single effort to make us become a sanctuary county. But with that said, I'm elected to represent and to lead. I ask myself every day in this job, what good can I do today? I don't want to vilify either side of this debate, but the question that is posed to us as to whether or not we should make a declarative statement that we are not, something that we already are not, it seems to me needlessly divides our community. I do not want to divide our community. I represent a community that is deeply divided over this issue. So I think we can do something constructive without causing ourselves to divide our community. What is that good I can do today? I can try not to divide my community as I represent them, but I can lead my community by taking an affirmative action. I do not believe SB 54 is, at the end of the day, a good thing for California. It does two things, I can give you more, but I'm going to leave this to two so we can move on. It does two things that I specifically am opposed to. I spent much of yesterday analyzing, digging into, trying to understand all the nuances of it. SB 54 limits, and in some cases eliminates, the ability for local government to speak with the federal government. The inevitable conclusion of that scenario, as it rolls out to its eventual conclusion, the inevitable result is, I cannot protect my constituents as effectively if I cannot communicate with the federal government. I don't think that's a good element of SB 54. SB 54 also comes with a multimillion dollar annual price tag. I can guarantee you that Sacramento will foist upon Kern County and the other 57 counties in California the cost of implementing that legislation. I don't think that's fair. That's what the state does all the time to us. So I too oppose SB 54. But, and as I told you, I'm not going to vilify either side. As good intentions as our sheriff has for us to adopt this, we are not now, nor have we ever been a sanctuary county. I don't see any reason for us to make that declarative statement, but I will join others if they wish to oppose SB 54.
Thank you Supervisor Maggert. My turn. First of all, I respect the opinions of all my colleagues. I think everybody cares deeply about our community and cares deeply about their constituents. I know our sheriff cares deeply about this county as well, and his job is to keep us safe, and I think that he does the best job that he can at doing that. I do want to say that I agree with Supervisor Gleason's comments and Supervisor Maggert's comments in regards to the need for us to do something that is of substance, that is constructive, and that hopefully can affect public policy in a way that I think reflects the values of our community. I appreciate the opinion of county council, and I believe that this resolution would, that the sheriff is proposing, would have no binding effect on the sheriff. I think that the best course of action for us to take is to take a position of strong opposition to Senate Bill 54. I think that it's misguided, and I think that it will put our communities in more danger. And I would support a referral to staff to bring back a letter in strong opposition to that bill that's moving its way through Sacramento, and I would request, if any member of this board agrees with that, that we make, have a motion to make a referral to staff to draft such a letter. We do have a motion on the floor from Supervisor Couch, which was to bring the sheriff's proposal back as an action item, and so I'll ask if there's a second to that. If not, I'll ask if there is another motion for a referral to staff, and then we can move on with the business of the day. So is there a second on Supervisor Couch's motion? Okay, seeing none, that motion dies, and I will ask if there is another motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to refer to staff to develop a position paper on SB 54, in opposition to SB 54.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'd like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Supervisor Couch?
I just wanted to make a recommendation to staff that I think you can start with the sheriff's resolution, because it states that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one opposed. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you to all who came to speak today, and we're going to move on now to our, next item on our agenda, which is board members' announcements or reports. I'll give a few minutes for anyone who would like to leave the chambers to do so. We're going to move on now to item number 11 on our agenda, which is board member announcements or reports. This is an opportunity for members of the board to make announcements or report on their own activities, or to make a referral to staff. I'm going to ask if there are any supervisors that have a board member announcement or report? Okay, seeing none. I actually do have one today. There's been a lot of discussion that has occurred in our community. We've seen some in the media, we've had folks, I believe, visit our office, and they're greatly concerned with the PACE program and the HERO program. Both sides of the argument, some folks feel it's good, some folks feel that it has some unintended consequences that are escalating. And this has to do with a program for energy conservation projects, solar on homes, et cetera, that has a financing mechanism that many, many folks are concerned about in our real estate community, our lending community, because of the high interest rates and some other issues. And so I would like to make a referral to staff, specifically to our CAO, Ryan Alsop, to hold some stakeholder, to hold a stakeholder meeting this month as soon as possible, and to then have an item come back to our board for discussion. And I believe that this, there is a sense of urgency on this, because more and more folks are entering into the program, taking out the loans, doing the improvements, and I believe that the sooner that we can have this discussion, the better for us to contemplate Kern County's continued participation in the program. So, Mr. Alsop, would you care to respond to that, so members of the board can determine whether or not they would like to make that referral?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'll get right on that. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Is there a motion to support that referral? Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that the discussion needs to take place, but I want the discussion to take place, and we move forward with this. I have constituents reporting to me that they are being told, being given assurances of how this program works, and those assurances are not correct, and I don't want that to be left in our community and the opportunity for more and more people to become diserved. So can you, I would suggest that this come back to us no later than three weeks from now, and we have our report, and we decide if we're going to demand that the program be modified, or whatever the other options are that we have. So I would hope that we could do that. I would make that referral. If it needs to be in the form of a motion, I would do that, but I'd ask the CAO's office to bring that back to us no later than three weeks from today.
Supervisor Maggert, I appreciate you reiterating the sense of urgency on this. I would like to see this come, I think three weeks is a good target, I think it's a necessary target, and so I just would like to see this come back before the end of the month, and I think that's right around in your timeline. I understand that the city of Bakersfield, who is also a participant in the program, they have a legislative and litigation committee that I believe meets at the end of the month, and so they'll be having a discussion and making a recommendation onto the full council. But I agree with you, I would like to have one bite at the apple at the board, if at all possible, and so that's why I think the stakeholder meetings would be important for staff to develop a recommendation to the board.
Will do.
Do we have a second on that referral?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Oops, I'm sorry. Let's reset the vote.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. And, okay, seeing no other board member announcements or reports, we're going to move on then to item number 15 on our agenda. This is an item under the county administrative office, request from the Director of Airports to refund the 2011 private placement refunding debt obligation for the Meadowsville Terminal and to waive the Kern County Policy Administrative Procedures Manual, requiring a refunding of current debt to result in a cost savings to the county. Mr. Alsop, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Elsa Martinez, Chief Deputy for the County Administrative Office, will make the presentation on this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Your Director of Airports has requested that your board's approval for the refunding of the 5.3 million outstanding loan associated with the construction of the terminal at Meadowsville Airport. Their request is to extend the maturity from five years to 15 years in order to lower annual payments to free up appropriations and cash flow for capital projects and maintenance of existing assets. After reviewing a restructuring analysis and consulting with the county tax attorney, our refunding would resolve in positive annual cash flow of approximately half a million annually for the first six years, and an increase in cost of about 1.1 million from year seven through 15. We evaluated other options, however, budgetarily, refunding is the best option. While county policy requires that any refunding of outstanding debt results in a minimum of 5% net savings, your Director of Airports has indicated matching the debt service requirement with the availability of passenger facility charges will enable him to better maintain assets, serve the community, and increase the capacity of the terminal going forward. The recommended action is for your board to provide direction, and if your board approves the request for the refunding and the waiving of the county policy, the county administrative office will work with the Director of Airports, our financial and tax consultants, and county council to proceed with the refunding, and will return to your board for approval of financing documents. This concludes my remarks, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We have our Director of Airports with us here, Mr. Richard Strickland. Mr. Strickland, do you have any comments on this item?
I'm just here in support of the item. Should the board have any questions at all?
Very good. I'll now ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, I have some concerns about this item. How many, well, let me lay out the concern, and then we can discuss what alternatives there might be. My concern is that, due to an understandable change of circumstances with the withdrawal of one of the major airlines from our airport's activity, which costs us about $400,000 a year, I understand that, that has left us with a cash flow problem at the airport. My dilemma is that because we have a short-term cash flow problem, we are considering an option that will cause the taxpayers to incur, Ms. Saldana, is it, I thought that the number, the $500,000 a year savings for the first five or so years was what the staff report said, but I thought the staff report says that the sum of the result of the whole 15-year term is a net $1.1 million excess cost to the taxpayer. Is that accurate?
Supervisor Maggert through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. So I think your statement was, I might have misunderstood it, but it might have been slightly easy to misunderstand. It isn't $500,000 of savings in the first six years, and then a million dollars of loss in the next, for the remaining term. It's a net million-dollar loss over the course of the 15 years. It isn't 500 plus, plus a million minus a net 500,000, it's a million dollars cost to the taxpayer. So what my concern is, is that we have a temporary cash flow problem, understandable, but we are taking a long-term, we're proposing a long-term solution, which will only cost us more money. So I would like us to look at what alternatives there are on how we can manage our short-term cash flow problem. If we're going to pay extra dollars that we will never recover to go outside of the county, are there any other alternatives? Is there any way that we can provide some of that financing internally? Can that interest go back into our own pocket? Is there any other way we can manage this, other than give a million dollars to someone else, and what I think in the long run exacerbates our circumstance? It is logical to try to match our cash flow with our, try to match the payment schedule with our cash flow, but I don't think it is prudent, in my opinion, that we do so when the net cost is so significant, and I haven't heard a single alternative presented to us on how we might be able to avoid that, from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Maggert. Mr. Alsop, would you like to respond? Or?
Yeah, no, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let Elsa respond to that question.
Supervisor Maggert, the refunding will allow the airport to have approximately $3 million that could be used for the capital projects that they're requesting. An option that we look at is borrow $3 million to complete those projects. There's still an interest cost to the county from borrowing. As you indicated, if the county were to provide that funding, it would be a, a cash flow does not necessarily provide appropriations for the department. So, it would have to be a contribution from the county, from the general fund, to, for those projects. Potentially, the, I have not evaluated the possibility of passenger facility charges, being able to pay interest, that's definitely something that we could explore, if those could be used for, to pay the general fund interest. I'm not aware that, that possibility, but we can certainly evaluate it.
Thank you. I understand that there is, of the $3 million approximately that the Airport Director would like to use, it has to do with passenger bridges to go onto the airplanes, it has to do with our luggage handling ability, it has to do with financing part of the left runway as opposed to the right runway. I understand all that, but I think it's worthwhile to explore if there are other alternatives. Yes, if we were to finance externally what those, that $3 million, we would pay some interest. My understanding from the Airport Director is, it was about $750,000 of interest, as opposed to a million dollars net loss with the other scenario. That is still an improvement over the million-dollar loss that we have here. But I would like us to explore whether or not, we have had arrangements before, where we have provided short-term financing to the airport district, and allowed for it to repay us. And I think that option is an option that we should consider before we say irrevocably that we're going to spend a million dollars more than, than we had intended to spend at the outset. Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggert. No, Mr. Strickland would like to provide some additional comments. Mr. Strickland?
Yes, Chairman Scrivener and Supervisor Maggert through the chair. Respectfully on the comment, there is no taxpayer funds that would be paying off the new long-term 15-year debt obligation. It's revenues generated by the airport through user fees that would be paying that off. And in doing so, and stretching this out to 15 years, I had handed out a schedule to the Clerk of the Board that just tried to elaborate on and go into a little bit of detail as to how we get to the end of the road with the PFC funds. The passenger facility charge funds would mirror and go out with, as the schedule indicates on the video screen, all the way to 2032. And those passenger facility fund charges are user fees only for those people who purchase tickets and travel through Meadows Field Airport, not for the general taxpayer. And so, those revenues would then align with the new debt service of approximately $450,000. And that way, airports would not obligate the general fund of the county with any of its debt capacity. The current refunding instrument that Elsa helped do in 2012 is a private placement interest instrument, and we're merely trying to still stay within the private placement interest. And that way, airports' revenue stream off the PFCs will pay that long-term obligation. And as one of the things that I tried to stand up with this Board and commit to you all with the runway project, is that the Department of Airports would not go into the general fund for any of the substantial projects that we're trying to do with the runway. This sudden change with the loss in the Houston flight because of the oil market crashing is one of those difficulties that we do, and this was one of those solutions that I was able to come up with. And I do understand, Supervisor Maggert, your comments, I was just trying to provide some clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. I feel like we're close on this. I think that it would be a benefit if we continue this item for at least a week, thinking one week, so CAO and airports can look at any of the other alternatives. Supervisor Maggert suggested there may be another way for us to do this, and come back with a recommendation from CAO on how to proceed. I understand the logic of what you're proposing, but I don't think that another week would hurt in any way and could be beneficial. So, is that, if that's something that the rest of the Board would support, we can come back and hopefully look at this item when it's fully hashed out. Okay, so, anybody like to make a motion to continue? We could continue for a week. Ms. Martinez, do you feel like a week's enough time? Otherwise, we're looking at three weeks, because we're dark in between. So, it's either next Tuesday or May 23rd, I believe. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
So, what, how long do you need, Elsa? Excuse me.
Supervisor Scrivener, one week is sufficient.
Perfect, okay. So, a motion, we have a motion from Supervisor Perez to continue this item for one week, then we'll come back and revisit it, and we have a second from Supervisor Gleason? Okay, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you both, Mr. Strickland and CAO staff. Okay, moving on now to item number 18 on our agenda. This is an item under the Fire Department. This is a status report and continuation of local emergency due to tree mortality. And we have our Fire Chief, Brian Marshall, with us, as well as Deputy Chief Moon. Good, was it afternoon yet? No, not quite. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the Board. This item is the status report and the continuation of a local emergency proclamation due to the tree mortality in Kern County. For the last year, the Kern County Fire Department's been talking to your Board about tree mortality across the county. This is related to the drought, which has caused bark beetles to invade our pine trees across the county, actually across the state. There's millions of dead trees, which have contributed to increased fire activity, when we do get wildland fires and the tree mortality, and it's been quite the challenge for the Fire Department to fight these fires. But, we've been out there on the front lines, working to come up with a long-term solution to remove the dead trees, to reduce that fuel for the fire. So, we have a presentation for you this morning, and Deputy Chief Brent Moon will be doing this presentation. Chief Moon oversees our wildland program.
And before, there's a picture on the screen, just for members of the public, the trees that are brown, obviously, those are trees that have died. But, what's the likelihood that every green tree that's around those are also infested and will soon meet the same fate?
Chairman Scrivener, that's a good point, is oftentimes when we look at the brown trees, we know they're dead, but the green trees around them, quite often, most of them are dead also. It's a pretty pervasive issue where the trees die before they know it.
I just, I wanted to make that point, so members of the public can understand that fact, because this is a horrendous problem that we're dealing with, and has huge ramifications. And so, please proceed, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Scrivener. I'll start off with a little video here as our first one. This kind of shows you what it looks like. This is Bear Valley last year, to get a perspective of the vastness of this problem. It's this situation that caused the Board to declare an emergency for the tree mortality, and prompted us to form a Kern Tree Mortality Task Force, in concert with what the state's doing to address this problem, and try and bring our resources together and do our best efforts to deal with this issue. So, a task force was formed. First, we had a briefing, March 2016, and we had our first meeting, and we had a briefing from the State Task Force, members from Sacramento. April 5th, your Board declared an emergency, a local emergency, for the tree mortality, and we began to organize a organization for the Tree Mortality Task Force. It was decided that oversight would be Supervisor Scrivener, Chairman Scrivener, and Chief Marshall. I was to lead the task force, and we have Deputy Chief Dave Witt for the planning portion of this. We used County Council, GK, has been involved with the state level and our local level for the legal and regulation issues that come up from the tree task force. Judy Hyatt has been our public outreach person, and Jose Deleon, our GIS specialist, has been helping us with mapping. We have quite a few members joining together to try and deal with this issue, starting with the Kern Valley Fire Safe Council, Toatchby Fire Safe Council, Pine Mountain and Fraser Park Fire Safe Councils, the Sequoia Forest, Lost Padres Forest, Bureau of Land Management, Caltrans, Natural Resource Conservation Service, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, Southern California Edison, PG&E, County Roads and County Parks. We come together monthly to meet and share what progress we're making and what we can do to help the problem. We developed with GK's, County Council's help, a right-to-enter permit and established that. We established on the website, the Fire Bar website, information for hazard reduction, or hazards for the tree mortality. Projects were prioritized, and we were seeking grants to fund these. We received a track chipper from Cal Fire, and we began to work with our crews and with CCC crews from out of the area, until fire season started and we had other commitments. The Fire Safe Councils have been providing our public outreach to those people who live in these forested areas. This is a picture of a track chipper. It's actually a device that can move to where the tree problem is, and take the tree materials and make them into the chipping, the small pieces we can put on the ground to reduce the hazard. We've had several projects. After assessing our roads and our communities, we started working on where we could attack the dead trees. We started in Bear Valley. We worked on the Deer Trail Road to try and clear the dead trees around that, as well as, at the same time, Southern Cal Edison. I had contractors, and we contracted with Witt and Logging to remove the trees from the power lines in the area, which paralleled most of those roads. So, we worked together on that. We've worked up in Toatchby Mountain Park, Alta Sierra, the parks and the roads up there. Southern Cal Edison has project currently working up at Highway 55 in Alta Sierra for the power line right-of-way, for clearing the trees that would threaten those power lines. Caltrans is also working on a project up in that area on Highway 155, to make sure that our road stays open. One of our primary focuses is the egress, to be able to go without the trees blocking egress. So, shared projects with Lost Padres Forest around the Fraser Park and Pine Mountain area have started and are working forward now, are moving forward now. PG&E's most of their projects around Bakersfield and the Valley area. That's their area of influence. Just a picture to show you tree removal, what it looks like, and chipping. We talked about the chippers. You can see on the right there where the materials put down on the ground and made kind of a nice contours in there. This is up at Alta Sierra. After the CCC crews were up there working and they were chipping, some of the piles and debris that were there were made to look like this area here, nice and open, healthier for the forest. Coordinating our efforts on these projects in interest, we're considering the roads, the homes, and the utilities, and how we can work together with all the entities to clear the dead trees. The hazards and threats we have go from the fire hazard to falling trees, as you see here with some of the storms we've had recently, the trees are shearing off, as you see in this picture, which is even an increased hazard for the dead trees, the falling and the hazard to houses and to people in the area. Because of this, our property values have been lowered. So, currently, they're saying that there's approximately little, under 3 million trees in Kern County that are dead. Kern County is one of the 10 high-risk counties identified in the state, and we've been supporters of a letter that was written to the Senate and Assembly to address more support in our request. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, and our priority is public safety and the forest health.
Members of the Board, we continue to work through this tree mortality across Kern County. This is going to be a long-term problem that we'll be working on. It's been said that the only way to kill off the bark beetle is a very severe winter with hard freeze that lasts several weeks, or a wildland fire that burns through the area. We don't want either, because they also, even a freeze kills the vegetation, which increases the fire hazard. We're in there working. It's definitely a partnership between private agencies, the utility companies, the Fire Department, state and federal firefighting agencies. We're working across the county to try to lessen the danger, but again, it's going to be a long-term problem that we're going to be working on, and we'll continue to bring back this local emergency proclamation until the problem goes away. Therefore, it's recommended that your Board hear the presentation, receive and file the status report, and approve extending the local emergency due to tree mortality within Kern County for an additional 30 days. That concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions your Board may have.
Chief Marshall, thank you, and Chief Moon, and to everyone on your staff, and all those other agencies that have been working on this problem. It seems insurmountable, it's overwhelming, and resources are tremendously scarce. You know, there are, there is some help in the form of grants that's coming in from the state, but it's, it is nowhere near what we need to really be able to go out and address the problem, and so you're doing the best you can, and we greatly appreciate your efforts, and so do all the folks who live up in those mountain communities. So, thank you so much. Are there any comments from any members of the public? Mr. Fox? Good morning. Please state your name.
Good morning. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Dennis Fox. Looking at some of this stuff, and I think there's a couple of resources that might not be looked at. One of them, I think, is not going to work, and that is getting private chipper companies. And the reason is, is I think the other counties already got them. But there is one that I think might be overlooked, and that's the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They have a chipper sitting out there at Lost Hills that's not used. They don't have anybody to run it. And they also have a fire crews. This is not generally known, but, and then they can work reverse, because they do control burns the opposite of what other people are doing, and because they have water in their ponds in the winter, you know, they try to burn them off. So, that might be something that we're taking a look at. Personally, the contact might be, the name might be pretty good, her name is Kim Forrest. So, might be somebody there. The other one is, there are so many trees, I, you know, I don't think you're going to be able to do it. And I agree there that. You might think about what needs to be done in logging. And the trouble is, is the logging, the mills are gone, and to bring them back, I think you might, this is a time, I think it wouldn't hurt to incentivize somebody to come. Personally, I'd like to see the one that you're already incentivizing, good company. And I have a few differences with them, but I have a few differences with you sometimes. I don't want you to all run up on the roof and jump or anything like that. The third one I ran across last week, and that is California Fish and Game Commission. And they are, the legislature passed a law banning lead bullets, and had the commission to figure out what's going on. And last week, they were looking at frangible bullets, but with the cost of copper... But with the cost of copper bullets, people are going to go to, and it's already been happening, and it's been causing fires, more surplus bullets that are steel. And the steel, there are rocks out in that woods. There's a lot of rocks, and when that steel bullet hits a rock, you have a fire. And there's been several like that. Forest Service has been trying to ban them. A couple little towns, well, one of them's about 4,000 caught a fire up in Trinity County. Their county seat up there got nailed, and they were having a match because of these cheap bullets, and it started a fire. And a letter to them, to the commission, to take a look at that, because I don't think anybody's looking at that one, the steel bullets. And they are looking at things for being humane kills, which these aren't. Best thing I've ever seen is, their best thing is for hunting cars, but, and you can't get car tags. But that's one you might want to try, just to send a letter, ask them to take a look at the steel bullets. And I was thinking incentivizing logging, and just give a phone call Fish and Wildlife Service, see if they'd be willing to loan out some of their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I, I don't know that you're, you will know the answer to this. I certainly don't know the answer to the question, hence I ask. When this process has concluded and these trees ultimately die out, is there the, the possibility that we can reforest the area? And if that is the case, should we try to remove the, the dead trees sooner so we can begin the reforestation process sooner? And what is the, what is in place about that?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, yes, reforestation is going to be one of the top priorities. We're in, as that one photo showed, we're in basically clear-cutting the dead trees out of the communities. Bear Valley's been one of the hardest-hit areas, and large areas of it have actually changed. It's no longer a forest, but it's wide-open spaces. The plan would be to reforest. Again, it's money, it's people, it's the time it takes to cut the trees down. As Mr. Fox said, going in and chipping, all of our fire crews have chippers. We received a new chipper. We're trying to get the material out and then attack the problem going forward with, you know, putting the, the land back the way it was.
So the chipping process, it seems to me, is, it, it's a one-way expense. It, it only generates cost and no revenue. Is there any other solution? Is logging a solution? Can this product be used for any other purpose that will help cover the cost of removing it?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, some people are taking the wood for, to turn it into lumber, but the lumber, or the wood becomes damaged, and it's no longer desirable for the, the mills. We've been removing the trees through the logging companies to drop them on the ground, and then our fire crews are in there removing, using the chippers to remove the slash. But we have large log decks in our communities that we're trying to get out of there because that's just taking the fuel from standing upright to putting it on the ground. So there's a lot of work that we're doing and, and trying to figure out where to put the material. Again, it's, it's experts at the state and federal level that we're working with to provide long-term solutions in our communities. It's, it's going to be a long, involved process to get the dead trees out. And let me stress, one of the things we're trying to do is get the dead trees on the ground. They are a definite safety hazard in the winds. The trees are shearing off and falling, and dead trees that are standing for a long period of time can just fall at any time. And in these recreational areas where families may be on a camping trip or a day walk, a tree falling over could have disastrous consequences. We're attacking the problem every way we can. We're going to continue working on it. Again, it's a long-term problem.
Last question. Thank you for that explanation. Last question. The by-product chipped material that is now all over the ground, of what fire hazard is that?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair, yeah, it, it's adding additional fuel to the, the mountains, the wildland areas. One of the things that we see with wildland fires is tall grass, which is an increased fire load and increased fire behavior. Having the, the material on the ground is not as much of a fire danger. It doesn't contribute to very intense fires such as a stand of dead trees or dead brush. So that's the, what we're doing right now. We're chipping the, the branches and the small material to reduce it, and then working on the larger logs to remove them out of the area. But any fuel in the wildland areas does contribute to the problem.
Very good. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. I would just add one, one other thought, and that's the cogeneration plants that we have throughout the county. They've been, they've been shuttered because of utility rates, and we supported legislation, this board, to help to incentivize to get those back open. It's a big property tax benefit for us. Our farmers utilize those for their, their wood waste, crop waste, et cetera. You take an orchard out, you need someplace to put it, but this, that is another source for this fuel if we're successful in seeing legislation to help to get those up and running. So hopefully that pans out as well. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Chief, have you done any, has the chipper done any work up in the Frazier Park, Pine Mountain Club area, or do you have that scheduled?
Yes, Supervisor Couch, we, we've been using the chipper up there for years to reduce fuels and put it on the ground. We have some projects that now, we have our crews back in service. They are on their way up there to do some work currently.
Today?
Well, yeah, this week, this month. They're do, they're doing work. They're heading that way. We, we had them working to, to wrap up Bear Valley, and now we're redeploying them towards the Frazier Park, Pine Mountain area this month.
I'd like to just, if you could just let me know when, when they're going to be up there, I might like to drop by and see that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments from members of the board, the requested action is to approve your presentation, receive and file. Do we have a motion on staff's recommendation?
Motion.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Chief Marshall, Deputy Chief Moon, thank you so much, once again. Okay. Last item on our agenda for the AM session is an item under Treasurer-Tax Collector. This is item 34, Proposed Selection of Voya Financial as the Successful Vendor in Response to a Request for Proposal or Record-Keeping and Administration Services for the County's 457 Deferred Compensation Plans. And we have Chase Nunley, our Assistant Treasurer-Tax Collector. Good morning.
Well, I guess I get to be the first to say good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr., or members of the board.
You're right. It's 12:01.
I'm Chase Nunley, the Assistant Treasurer-Tax Collector, and while normally the elected treasurer, Jordan Kaufman, would be presenting this, he was one of the five members of this evaluation committee on this RFP, so he's unable to prevent, present the matter himself. The item before you today is for your board to approve the award for RFP for Deferred Compensation Record-Keeping Services to Voya Financial and authorize the Treasurer-Tax Collector and Plan Administrator to move forward with contract negotiations. As background, the Kern County Treasurer-Tax Collector administers the county's two 457 Deferred Compensation Plans with consultation from the Deferred Compensation Advisory Committee. The county currently, currently has a contract with Empower Retirement for Record-Keeping Services for both plans. Under the county's direction, the record keeper manages and invests, the investment options and acts as the custodian for all participant accounts. The contract with Empower expires on October 1st, 2017. On October 4th of 2016, your board approved the issuance of an RFP for Record-Keeping Services, and the county received eight responses. The RFP Evaluation Committee thoroughly reviewed the RFP requirements, the submitted proposals, and made contact with references submitted by each proposer. Three finalists were then invited for final interviews, and after completing the RFP process, the Evaluation Committee unanimously determined that the proposal provided by Voya Financial was the most beneficial for the plan participants. The Deferred Compensation Advisory Committee reviewed the Evaluation Committee's recommendation and concurred. Voya Financial demonstrated a keen understanding of the current needs of the Deferred Compensation Plans and provided an exciting future vision that would benefit plan participants. Voya Financial also demonstrated excellent technological capabilities for both plan participants and the plan administrator. Some advantages Voya Financial will provide the county and participants are an enhanced website and mobile application experience, including the ability for participants to enroll online, request distributions online, and have a streamlined online ACH request process. They've got an experienced team, including a dedicated transition manager, communications manager, and project manager that'll ensure a smooth transition from the current provider. They have a competitive cost structure that includes a separate account, stable value fund product, maintaining a AAA rating in a low duration while earning a significantly higher rate for the participants, and industry-leading technology along with a recognizable brand name and marketing and communication materials. So therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the award of the RFP for Record-Keeping Services for the county's Deferred Compensation Plans to Voya Financial and authorize the Treasurer-Tax Collector, Plan Administrator to move forward with contract negotiations and bring back the necessary agreements to your board for final approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nunley. Are there any questions or comments from members of the audience? Okay. Seeing none, I'll return to the board.
I'll move the staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for the AM session. We do have several items to consider in closed session. We have items 35 and 36 under County Administrative Office, and items 37 through 40 under County Councils. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
We are adjourned.